Good evening, Lake Forest. Welcome to the Monday, July 2nd, 2018 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is reports of city officers, comments by the mayor. I will just have two this evening, both related to upcoming events in Lake Forest. First of all, is the great annual Fourth of July celebration, Hula Baloo, that will be at Deerpath Community Park on Wednesday, July 4th, which is sponsored by the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation that brings the whole community together. This is the 12th annual festival and fireworks. Gates open at 5:00, music starts at 6:00, and at approximately 9:40, and I'm quoting what the sponsors have to say here, "The greatest fireworks display on the North Shore begins filling the skies." I dare say that is all very true, as we all know. Secondly, it's never too early to make one's plans for Lake Forest Day. And the carnival portion begins Tuesday night, July 31st, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And Lake Forest Day itself kicks off Wednesday, August 1st, at 10:00 a.m. with the parade. And the theme of this year's parade is honoring Lake Forest Hospital, as well as recognizing the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Historical Society and Reading Power Incorporated. We have many cultural and civic institutions that need to be recognized, so we've got a potpourri of honorees this year. The carnival runs on Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the American Legion is actively seeking volunteer help, and interested parties can visit on the web, lakeforestday.com. It has its own URL. With that, I will turn it to the city manager for comments.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we're very fortunate to have with us our state senator, Julie Morrison. Originally, we asked Julie to come and talk about Senate Resolution 1746 that was introduced but not acted on by the Senate in this past session, and sort of what the implications are, because our friend, the village of Glenview, adopted a resolution supporting this resolution, and there was a request by some of the aldermen that the city should do the same thing, so we thought we would have Julie here this evening to talk about that. And because, I said, "Well, you're here, and so you might as well address a few other topics that have been recently acted on by the state legislature," we thought that she could also brief us on the budget that was recently approved, as well as the recent decision by the U.S. Supreme Court on sales tax, online sales tax receipts, and what the implications might be for there. And also, I asked her to maybe give us a peek under the tent with respect to a potential capital bill for 2019. So with that, Julie, if you could please come forward.
Well, thank you all for asking me here this evening. It's good to be here, and I'm sorry that this is almost a month late, so it's not as newsworthy as I had hoped it would be, or as current, but thanks to Mr. Kylie, I do have sort of a laundry list of things to click through, so let me start with that, and then please interrupt me as we go through. I just want this to be sort of an informal response to the questions that I got from Bob. So, the Senate Resolution 1746 was initiated and sponsored by Senator Daniel Biss. As a chief co-sponsor, it is obvious that this is something I care very deeply about and also want to pursue. However, not being the chief sponsor, the original, I did not have the ability to move the resolution. I will tell you that it is still, unlike legislation that tends to die after May 31st, if it's not specifically extended, the Senate Resolution is still alive and well. So I would encourage you to, if it is, you know, the council's will, to join Glenview and advocate for this. Resolution is, and I feel like I'm, you know, preaching to a choir of people who already know this, because you guys, you're a city council, this is a resolution. This is not a binding statute. This just implies what the state's intention and wish and request is, and that is to have a fuller and deeper and more meaningful and more detailed analysis. I just learned from one of your residents this evening that there appears to be other documentation that is now surfacing that indicates that we do need to be very guarded. We need to be very proactive and protective of Lake Forest, despite the fact that we are under the impression that maybe this third rail was not going to come through. It seems that that's not necessarily given. So I would ask you to please consider passing an ordinance or a resolution, whatever it is, to support this resolution. We will take this up and veto. If Senator Biss, who is not going to be returning to the Senate for some reason, is not there for veto session in November, I will be happy to ask him to please assign it to me so that we can take care of it in proper order. Anything on that before I move on?
If I may, Alderman Bushman, but I had the pleasure of meeting you on June 21st when you were kind enough to sponsor a forum titled "Impacts of Transportation Projects on Our Environment" at Alamo Farms.
Right.
And again, thank you very much, and co-sponsor from Lake County, Mr. Rumel, and had very good speakers advising us on the impacts of freight and train in our environment. And also appreciate you co-sponsoring, albeit not the chief co-sponsor, of Senate Resolution 1746. And as I read it, you know, you are urging what we've urged on several occasions, that this project not be reviewed under the EA or Environmental Assessment approach, but as a full environmental review as an EIS. And also Congressman Snyder's proposal that there also be a specific freight impact study done, something that, again, we've gone on record and supported because of the fear of the impact of this proposal on our community. So again, thank you, and I know I'd be happy to encourage our council to do a like resolution to what the village of Glenview also did, recognizing that we're still a long way knowing what it's going to do, and, you know, it was very helpful to see Metro's statement that they do not need that third rail, but what impact it has on the sponsors, particularly from WISDOT standpoint, obviously are key questions. So again, thank you for your support, and thank you for your help in this endeavor.
Sure, and yes, sir.
Yeah, just a question. I was just curious how many resolutions like this appear, and what happens after they get passed or endorsed at the state level? Do they go into the appropriate agencies to be reviewed, or...
I mean, a resolution is just simply a suggestion. So if this is acted upon a formal signed copy, that would be executed by the Senate and then would be delivered to whichever parties are listed in the actual resolution.
Okay.
But it's, unfortunately, it's not binding, but it is a strong recommendation, and I think that your city council's support would go a long way.
And the people that receive it, do they respond, or do they acknowledge it, or do they provide a point of view?
Not necessarily. They can ignore it.
Well, along those lines, have we had a council, through a council discussion of this as an agenda item at any point?
No, the idea was to have Senator Morrison here this evening to just explain it, and then if there was interest on the part of the city council, they would direct staff to prepare the necessary resolution and put it on a future council meeting agenda.
Well, how do we make that proposal, that it at least be placed for discussion at one of our future meetings?
One of you could just make that request?
I'm making it. I will make it.
I'd be happy to second, if it needs a second.
Okay.
And we had talked earlier about, you know, taking the opportunity of hearing Senator Morrison and looking at the status and seeing what future developments, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the questions and the support that I hope we see coming forward. You do have until November, I would say, but thanks for putting it on your agenda if you can. The state budget, so as you all know, we passed a budget, a bipartisan budget, that we finished on time. It shouldn't be a big deal. It shouldn't be noteworthy, but maybe it is. What I saw this time, which was different than the previous two years, was coalitions of legislators working together over a period of months. There were numerous hearings. There were quiet, small groups that met. There were large committee hearings, but it all accumulated into, I think, a good compromise budget that was passed. Some of the highlights of that, that especially I thought you might be aware of, if you're not, you should be, is the LGDF. The governor did recommend a permanent 10% cut in LGDF. I think because so many of us heard so loudly from the municipal league, from the Northwest Municipal Conference, that this was absolutely not acceptable, that the compromise became 5%. It's not permanent. It is a one-year 5%, so that is, in some ways, we are coming back to where we need to be, and it's the intention from at least the folks that I talked to that worked very closely on the budget from in the Senate, said it's their hope that we completely restore LGDF next year. Another restoration was going from 2% to 1.5% on the administrative sales tax piece. Again, there's not a single municipality that applauded the efforts of the state when that happened. This is a rollback. It is headed in the right direction. I can't guarantee you that it will continue to move, but I think it's a promising sign that your voices were heard loud and clear in Springfield, and that the organizations and your presence in Springfield made a difference. So I would say keep being loud and clear on that. We were able to, this budget makes all the required pension payments without borrowing. No debt was issued to make these payments. School funding will be increased by $350 million in this next year, and there will be an additional $50 million for early childhood education. There was approximately $600 million in spending cuts. This, the document that finally was passed was 1,200 pages. And as I shared with Bob, if you have specific questions about specific programs or line items, I'm happy to get that to you. I did not bring that, and in all honesty, I haven't read the 1,200 pages, but I am happy to dig as deep as you ask. And so if you have a laundry list of things when I leave this evening, I'll be happy to dig those up, to excavate, and to get back to you with answers. Some of the ways that there were savings were through, what we're hoping is some innovative pension reform measures, such that you could, the state would be able to purchase the 3% compounded COLA that accompanies state pensions. We don't really know what that's going to look like because it's a forecast, and we don't know how many people will take advantage of it, but it does seem to be something constitutional we can at least start with. That's kind of, yes, ma'am?
Senator Morrison, when I think about a budget of any size, I think about the balance between revenue increases or money coming in and money going out. When you look at what the state has done with this go-around, what's your net view of the pluses and minuses? Are we, as a state, taking in more, regardless of whether it's from municipalities or otherwise? Are we taking in more than we are spending, or do we have spending cuts that are more significant? Are we, how are we to think about that from the macro level?
There are, we, if I could go through all the agencies with you and all the different cuts I could show you, we took a million here, two million there, a lot of administrative cuts. A lot of program cuts were eliminated, were restored, for some things like on autism and some things in correctional facilities. I think we are treading water this year, to be really candid with you. I think we are going to be able to get through this year. There will be some new revenue, not tax-generated necessarily, not taxing our people, and that's actually one of the items that Bob asked me to talk about, which was the state sales tax on internet sales, which I looked at the projections on this. I found everything from 150 million to 696 million. Do you want to believe COGFA, or do you want to believe the Council of State Government, or do you want to believe somebody in between? They don't know. It's an absolute guess. I think it's better to be conservative, especially the first year out, and see how much we capture. The number that I've heard used bounced around is 200. So that is, that is new dollars. You know, and it's a win for the brick and mortar stores. So you guys will have to talk amongst yourselves in terms of what the impact of that is for your city. And then finally, capital bill. So it's really not a sneak under the tent, but I think everyone in Springfield is anticipating. We haven't had a capital bill for a while. Everyone is very aware of infrastructure that needs repair, whether it is on a highway, a bridge, a local government, across the board, there is a need. So I think there will be a capital bill, and I am offering to any and all municipalities that I represent to begin discussions with you, to see what your priorities are going to be. Remember, this will not be until next spring, but to find out and understand sort of projections of what projects are and how the state could interface to provide some of the funding for that. And that's all, it's brick and mortar. It is not going to be programs, and I know that a lot of you are already familiar with that, but I would encourage you to do what other municipalities are doing and sort of put together wish lists. And I would say late fall is a good time to do that, or during the winter. So we have that. I don't want Lake Forest to miss out, and I know things evolve and change, too, so it's, you shouldn't do it too soon.
Sure, okay.
Anything at all that I can, were there any things about the budget, very specific line items, programs, agencies, anything that you would like me to come back to with more information on? If you don't know right now, you can, you guys have my number. You can call me and ask me to provide something to you. I'm glad to do that, too.
Senator Morrison, I guess two quick questions. One, we've talked an awful lot in the last two or three years regarding property tax freezes. What is the latest in that conversation? And then with respect to the online sales tax, how is, just use Lake Forest as an example, if Bob Kylie goes on and buys something for $100, how is the sales tax that is collected from that online purchase distributed? Is it just on a per capita basis, or if I've put in there 6045, will that revenue come directly to the city of Lake Forest?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't want to tell you wrong.
Okay.
I can find out for him.
Oh, that'd be helpful, because I've asked a couple of people, and nobody seems to know. So it would be helpful for our long-range financial planning to be able to have that identified. And then on the property tax freeze?
So on the property tax freeze, it never goes away. And it's a very attractive thing for legislators to talk about, for voters to want, for residents to want. And yet I think, having sat in a chair similar to yours when I did run the local government, that I don't think our constituents necessarily have all the information that they should have, whether it is your city, or whether it is your school district, or library district. So I passed a resolution. We actually acted on this one, and it passed. And again, it's just a suggestion, but you guys might, guys and ladies, might take this up. It is to provide in the next 18 months, a public meeting, and it could be the tail end of a regular council meeting. It could be a separate public hearing where you discuss in detail what a one-year property tax freeze would mean to you and your services and your programs and your ability to do the work that you currently are doing and serve the people you are. A two-year and a five-year. And allow your constituents to understand what the impact of a property tax freeze would mean. Does it mean we're going to lose a couple of police officers? Does it mean we can't restore or renovate something that the, you know, that normally would be on the docket? Those are really important questions, and I think it's an educational opportunity for both all city councils, all elected boards, as well as the people that pay or pay the taxes to understand that. Schools, you know, are 65 about or 70% of property tax bills, and I really encourage every school district to take the opportunity to present in very open form what we're talking about, what the, what a property tax freeze would mean. And then let your, let your voters tell you what they think. They may be fine losing four or five teachers and a foreign language program and whatever else, but they may not be. So I think it's an educational piece, and we are going to continue to hear property tax freeze as a theme. So this was just my initiative of trying to come up with a way to really educate everybody and allow you to, and, you know, to make sure that your constituents understand what their dollars are paying for.
Just one second. Alderman Newman, you had a thought in here.
I had a two-part question, basically discussing what you've just gone over here, and that is, the state itself does not benefit from property taxes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand why Springfield feels it's so important to freeze property taxes. That dovetails into the next question, is what are you folks down there talking about when you start seeing pension obligations crowd out necessary services at the municipal level? On the one extreme, you've got a AAA-rated community like Lake Forest, and we've seen the crowding out of some other services, and we're struggling to balance our budget. The other extreme is Harvey, Illinois, which was unable to make its pension obligation and had its sales tax commandeered in favor of the pension. How, I mean, help me understand the math down there.
Every single city or village that I talked to, whether you are Lake Forest and probably pretty well-funded because you tighten your belt in other places and make the required pension payments, or places like Harvey that are desperate and despondent over it, everybody's got the same problem. I have been asking firefighters and policemen, individuals I run into, as well as organizations, would you consider doing what IMRF has done? Would you consider pooling, still allowing separate accounts, just as IMRF does, but pooling your resources to minimize the administrative cost and also to hopefully amplify what you're able to get back in returns? And I've had a lot of no's. I don't, I don't trust them. So I don't have, I, you know, Alderman, I don't have an answer for you. If you, if you have a concrete suggestion, I'm all ears.
You just made one.
And I've been asking, and I have been asking, I am one of 59 people, and I have been asking, and I'm doing it person by person, fireman by fireman, department by department, would you consider doing this? So...
That could have been done 30 years ago, and who knows how many millions of dollars could have been saved. I don't understand how it can be avoided.
The uproar is so outrageous from all the communities. When you cut enough things that make a difference, unfortunately, maybe that's what's going to take. I'm all for it, but I'm one person. You had a second part of your question?
That was both parts of the question.
Okay, okay, yes.
Senator Morrison, I'm, the positive note that the state will have capital money is pretty exciting, because we mostly don't think about money available to benefit us. It's a kind of an interesting concept, but...
It's not a given.
I got it. I got that. No, no, I'm, most, we don't, we're not, you know, you know how people are feeling about the finances in Springfield. Actually, we're thrilled that you have a budget, so great, and I loved hearing that it was a positive process. So anytime I can hear good news about Springfield, I'm slightly heartened. Help me understand what that capital money, should it happen, would look like? Would it be for targeted things? So in terms of us getting ready, we're thrilled to get ready to ask for a piece of something happening in Springfield, but would it be, would it have, obviously, probably have a matching requirement of some kind, we know about that, but would it be something that would be infrastructure? I mean, you think about capital being mostly infrastructure, but could it be more targeted than that? I mean, do you have any sense of what that might look like?
I had, you know, I have not been through what that looks like. The last one we had was 2009.
It was a while ago.
And so it was way before I got to Springfield.
Okay. So would you recommend, will, as you find out more, as soon as you'll keep us informed?
Absolutely.
So we should be thinking of several different things. We have a capital budget that goes into the future that's pages long, and we have a terrific system for organizing our capital needs. We can't always pay for the things that are pretty important, so we're, I don't know that I would say we're necessarily shovel-ready, but we are, we are organized, ready in terms of thinking about this carefully, but we'd want to be as strategic as possible in terms of getting our requests in. So you'll keep us posted?
I will, and again, I mean, all I, my understanding is that it's not program, it is brick and mortar. It could be HVAC, it could be sewer, it could be...
We got that. We got sewer. We have sewers.
What numbers are being kicked around about how much this would be?
No idea.
No idea. None whatsoever.
It's not, honestly?
I mean, I don't know where the money would come from.
My conversation, my conversation with Bob was just that. I've heard from several people that there is an interest in meeting the men's needs, and it would probably be, I think, Mr. Mayor bonded. But again, this is so preliminary, but I will keep you...
We'd rather borrow our own money, I think.
Okay, okay.
Maybe not.
Yeah, a heck of a lot less money.
Okay.
And it is, what does occur to, I guess because I'm 70, I'll say it, you know, it occurs to me, it's an election year, so there's this possibility sort of thrown up into the air of capital bill, when one, in any realistic sense, has to say, where the heck does the money come from? So borrow some money at eight or 9%, that's a capital bill?
I don't, I can't tell you what the percentage, I can't tell you the number. All I can tell you is if it does get closer, I just don't want you to be left out.
Right.
Well, and I would also say, based on...
That's all I can offer.
Sure, and based on past experience, it's one of those that we can either participate or not participate, but the residents of Lake Forest will ultimately pay a portion of it, because it will be bonded. And so, at least in the past, I think to Alderman Beidler's point, we have tried to identify one, two, or three projects, and it's as much an art as a science, because you're trying to find those that are enough, but not too much, that are going to make it, that resonate even potentially outside of Lake Forest, building that coalition. So it will be something that we can at least talk about in the summer or fall, and, you know, whether it happens or not, I think a lot might happen, or... know, whether it happens or not, I think a lot might happen, or determine what happens in the election in November, and then beyond that, we'll have to wait and see what happens in the economy and so forth.
All right, lots to...
I just have one quick question. Speaking of where is the money going to come from, where is Springfield now on the graduated income tax issue?
The graduated income tax issue is everywhere and nowhere. People are talking about it at, in coffee shops, in forums, both pro and con. There's nothing formal. I don't know what numbers are being thrown around, and it's actually, as I'm talking to people, I'm asking them what their thoughts are.
Probably nothing before the election, anyway.
Nothing's going to happen before the election, let's be honest. I mean, this resolution, okay, that we talked about to start the evening, but you're not going to see anything, I don't think, of great momentum before the election. And we, we are not scheduled to go back until veto. So unless there's some extraordinary something, we won't be going back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you all for having me, and you know how to get ahold of me, and I appreciate the invitation. Have a great Fourth, and I'll see you guys around.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is one that I think some of you are intimately involved with, because I know that Michael Thomas invited you all down to see firsthand what happened last Wednesday. And I have to say that it's a first for me. In twenty-seven years, we never had a mudslide in Lake Forest until last Wednesday, and it was quite a mudslide, shutting down the North Beach Access Road. So I asked Michael and Sally to be here this evening to give an update on that. I don't know, Sally, are we going to show the video first? Let's do the video first.
I actually have a part of the PowerPoint.
Oh, you do? Okay.
It's in the PowerPoint.
That's great. And I think, you know, the only comment before I pass off to Michael is that, you know, this is the kind of curveball that I think separates the okay communities from the very well-run communities, because not only did Mother Nature dump all of this mud and trees and siltation on the North Beach Access Road, but it was then followed by three-hundred-degree days, so we knew there were going to be a lot of people who were going to be looking forward to going down to the beach, plus we had a scheduled regatta the same weekend, and so there was a lot thrown at the staff. And the good news is, is that I think with maybe one exception of a person who was a little inconvenienced by the regatta, that everybody sort of adjusted accordingly, understood. But I will also say that the feeling out there is, okay, but when are you going to fix it? So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Thomas.
Great introduction, Bob. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we will provide a, an overview. I apologize for the screen, you do have some paper copies in front of you, and hopefully the screen is easier to see. I'll give you some background to the issue, an update on our ravine project, the bluff failure that occurred last Wednesday, the boardwalk update. We have a flyover that shows all three aspects: funding, staff recommendations, scheduling, and then we'll open it up for questions. When I'm done, Sally will talk about operationally what she and the park and rec. department have done to adjust. To begin with some background, back November twenty-first, City Council meeting in 2016, City Council approved a forest park bluff restoration feasibility study, where our engineering firm, our geotechnical analysis firm, AECom, studied the entire bluff. If you remember, we were getting ready to start the South Beach Access Road, but we wanted to make sure the entire bluff was studied. So City Council approved that study to occur. It was presented then at the March thirteenth budget meeting. The report was dated March first. We reviewed those results with the finance committee at that time. Essentially, the report noted three or four, highlighted three or four different areas along the bluff that were areas of concern. And their recommendation bottom line was, don't disturb it, don't touch it, let's let Mother Nature do what Mother Nature will do. If you go in and start messing with these bluffs, you could really have some catastrophic issues occur. Fast forward to last Tuesday evening, we, as we all know, had a significant amount of rain, two and a quarter inches, majority of that fell between seven-thirty and eight-thirty. If we look at both the May and June totals, it was the highest May on record for rainfall, it was the highest June on record for rainfall. So the ground was saturated, hence, if you remember that evening, I know Alderman Newman, you had noted Old Elm, there were many streets that flooded that evening. Forty-five minutes later, hour later, everything had receded, but it was a good amount of rain on saturated ground. That, in addition, did not help the entire bluff system, whether it was forest park or any private property. So the North Beach Access Road ravine status, the design from AECom is complete. We currently are ready to go out to bid this Thursday. The Army Corps permit will be ready and will be issued to us within one or two weeks. That has taken a long time to acquire, but AECom has worked with Army Corps and Lake County Stormwater Management. The tentative schedule before this bluff failure occurred was to bring it to City Council, bring it to our Public Works Committee, excuse me, July twenty-third, City Council August sixth, and begin the project the day after Labor Day. The project would take approximately two or three months to complete. Lo and behold, last Wednesday evening, a beautiful evening, just like tonight, around five forty-five or so, there was a significant bluff failure at the base of the North Beach Road. So if you're on the North Beach parking lot and are beginning to exit and go up the ramp, to your left, to your west, is the bluff, and about midway up, about fifty or sixty feet of it collapsed. Thankfully, there were no injuries, there were no damage to any resident vehicles, police department responded, fire department responded, Parks and Forest Street, Public Works. We actually, Bill Weaver, our engineer from AECom, came up from Chicago, brought an associate with him, Black Engineering was there, and Bill Vanaki with Kino Construction, who does a lot of ravine work, he was there as well. So we had a lot of people to assess what was going on. The following morning, we hauled all the material offsite, so the road was open for emergency personnel, but we at that point went ahead and closed the road. We actually have a lot of people that walk that access road, so we put a chain-link fence up, both at the bottom and midway, because we don't want people walking, we're concerned about that bluff moving. AECom on the twenty-third, Bill Weaver and one of his associates spent a good amount of the day investigating the entire bluff system. And then the following day, the fire chief, the police chief, director of Parks and Rec, and her staff met to discuss operationally how they would adjust operations, and where they could open up parking for the weekends. The boardwalk, as you may have seen, has been closed indefinitely. It's one of the areas that was noted on the March first, 2017, report. The bluff has moved. AECom, we are paying AECom to study, or excuse me, to look at the measurements of these bluffs. There's three or four inclinometers that have been installed on the bluff system, actually at this location is one of them. This bluff, and it's very difficult to see, but on the right-hand side, in the red, the red circle, it has dropped about three or four feet. Right below that is the boardwalk, and the boardwalk was straight, and now, over the past two years, the boardwalk in this area is at a very good angle. So flat-out dangerous, we don't want people walking on it. Let me see if we can get this to work properly. That didn't work, Susan.
Do you want Jimmy to come on?
That didn't do it. Is that... Okay, thank you. This was done today. This is going to show the three, the three different areas, both the ravine, we'll begin with the ravine. Again, it is just to the north of the access road. A good amount of erosion in the ravine, to a point where it is beginning to undermine the access road. The curb and gutter on the side is beginning to fall backwards and in, you can see it there, right at that point. We had actually filled that area with stone, it all has eroded and been washed away. The bluff failure, there it is, it's about fifty or sixty feet wide, all the way at the top of the bluff, all the way down, sort of a traditional California landslide. Finally, the boardwalk on the south end, this one is a little more difficult to see, but as we hone in in the end, is the area where there is a significant amount of movement. You'll see it there. So that, that is what we were able to do today. So funding, there's eight hundred, approximately, the ravine, we are estimating to cost about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair. Fiscal year nineteen, CIP has seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted. We have approximately seventy-five thousand dollars savings from the South Beach Access Road, from the Ferry Hall Bridge, an additional thirty-five, and then we are able to secure a grant from Lake County Stormwater Management in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. The bluff failure, and this, again, occurred Wednesday evening. AECom, their engineers, spent all Friday morning into Friday afternoon running all sorts of numbers, because I kept pushing them, saying, I'm going to be asked, what do we think? And he said, believe me, Mike, this is a very raw number, and I said, I'll take whatever you can give us. Approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To fund that, obviously, a couple of different options. Number one, defer a current budgeted project. I will say, from the engineering and public works side, most of our projects have already occurred, we're wrapping a lot of them up. Number two is to have City Council approve additional funds from the fund balance, whether that would be from the general fund or the capital fund. And then option three is to pursue some grants. The challenge with that is Lake Forest's eligibility. We have, for example, there's a grant that we were notified of from the National Recreation and Parks Association, and it refers to serving underserved communities, and the definition of that, Lake Forest, does not meet at all. Timeliness, obviously, and obviously guarantee and warranties, that type of thing. So grants are a possibility, but when we look at that bluff and we look at that ravine, we're very concerned that there's going to continue to be significant erosion. So what is our recommendation? We actually are recommending, rather than going out to bid this Thursday on the ravine project, that we would combine the two projects, and do what is referred to as a design-build approach, where we take the engineer, we take the contractor, we put them in this room together and say, figure it out and tell us a number. The pros to that, obviously, we can begin the ravine and bluff, or both repairs concurrent by mid to late July. We've minimized the erosion and the undermining of the roadway. There's fill material that will need to go into the ravine, we can take that from the bluff repair, not all of it, we've got to import some stone, but we need clay, and some of that can come from the bluff that would be reshaped essentially. Mobilization, you'd save on costs, rather than mobilizing construction crews and bringing in their equipment twice, you bring it in once. We would have the project, at least right now, we estimate that both projects, if they were to go concurrently, we could have everything open by late fall, that the North Beach Access Road would be open. And then obviously, the design-build, we would use selected firms, and in this case, AECom and John Kino Company. Both, the engineering firm, AECom, has done multiple, multiple projects along the North Shore, they've done various studies and analysis and designs for us, they have teamed up multiple times with John Kino and Company. The two together have done Fort Sheridan Ravine, they're currently working on that, McCormick Ravine, they did our cemetery ravine, they've done a couple of private ravines on Lake Road, and as the representative, Bill Vanaki, from Kino, told me that he and AECom together have done work from Lake Bluff down to Ham in Illinois. So in a design-build standpoint, from my standpoint, you want two companies that get it, and these two guys get it, they're very good. To do that, obviously, the con is that we would waive the bidding, the official bidding process, but we would, again, would take this design-build approach. We would return to City Council on July sixteenth with a contract for each AE, for both AECom and John Kino Company, and then as far as the bluff or the boardwalk, AECom's recommendation is to continue to monitor that. Again, to reemphasize the schedule, if City Council were to allow staff to proceed with discussions on this, we'd return July sixteenth, both projects would be open, would be completed, and the roadway open by the fall. If we do both projects independently, the roadway, we do not see being open for at least twelve months. We would have the ravine project done by late fall, but you've got to jump into a design, thorough design with the bluff, you turn around, and you've got to bid that project, and you've got to get on that bluff when it is not wet, not going to get on it in the spring. So we foresee a good twelve-plus months till we could get on that bluff and we could open the road. So with that, I'll happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Hey, Mike, can I have you hold, because I think they need to hear Sally's presentation before they come back onto that, so if Sally could do her presentation now about sort of operationally what's happening down there, then we can come back to this question.
Well, as Bob indicated, I have a little bit of a movie video myself, related to the event that we hosted this weekend. We, we were the hosting entity for the United States Junior Olympic Sailing Festival. We, we host every couple of years. This year, we had about a hundred and thirty-five children sailing out on the water, and when the road was compromised on Wednesday evening, we had to quickly switch gears and figure out how we were going to get all of those children and participants down to the south end and launched while accommodating our residents. I thought I'd give you a look at what the end product was before I get into the details of how we actually made it happen. It, they got six races in, it was perfect conditions, kids had a great time, the visiting folks, I mean, we pulled people from all over the region, and people had a wonderful experience. And that was due in part to a lot of really hard work, creative thinking, and can-do attitude from the staff at the city of Lake Forest. So as Michael indicated, on Wednesday evening, we had Parks and Forestry and Public Works and Police and Fire on the property, and as we were removing debris and talking about how we go forward, some great suggestions came up, and we pulled together a meeting on Thursday in order to pull all those brains into a room and get rolling, because we knew we had to accommodate a hundred and thirty-five visiting families, as well as our regular beach patrons, residents, non-resident guests, and provide them an, you know, a great experience on the weekend and for the upcoming holiday. So the staff met to... So the staff met to define the needs. And again, we pulled in public works, parks, forestry, public safety, and recreation to talk about what our options were to keep this facility up and running as we go through the summer. As we started to define our needs, we talked about supplies and transportation that we would need to gather. Everything from fencing, locks, buses, shuttles, golf carts, and parking alternatives. And I have to honestly say, I have to shout out to Lake Forest High School because they were wonderfully accommodating. Let us use their parking lot for the truck and trailers for the regatta participants. And we were able to bus them from the high school to the facility and back throughout the day. And we couldn't have probably, we could not have managed it without the high school being so accommodating. Once we, once we looked at what we needed, we decided we better get our parking plan out. So we sent out notifications to social media, constant contact, and email. And then the team jumped into implementing this action plan. Our first priority was to identify resident beach parking. We wanted to make sure our residents had access to this beautiful facility, and we knew it was going to be hot. So we prioritized the lower south parking lot as the number-one priority. We, that is traditionally a paid-for permit lot. We have now opened it up to the residents, regular residence sticker. We have set aside several spots for those who have actually purchased South Beach Parking, so that they would have a designated area to park in as well. We have also opened up the upper south parking lot as our number-two. And then we have used the west side of the Ring Road. There is designated area where the grass has actually been supported, and that is what is the green strip on the picture that you see there. We were able to accommodate quite a few people with diagonal parking in that area this year, or this past weekend. The next step was to identify additional parking options for those that come to the beach. Working with the police department and the college, we identified that we could utilize Westminster Road, Deer Path Road, College North Campus, and the East Train Station on weekdays only. So this diagram shows you that we are using the south side of Westminster Road from Sheridan Road to Lake. It's a very large area. It was well-used on Saturday afternoon and Sunday. People would just walk into the park and come down the stairs. So that this, this particular area worked out great. The, the second area is the south side of Deer Path Road between Washington and Sheridan Road. So it's basically the designated parking spots in, in front of the Presbyterian Church. So we have removed the signage there, and we are allowing parking for beachgoers. I'm not quite sure how many people actually used that this weekend, but I think we'll have a better idea as we go forward. Our next step was to reach out to the college. And they have graciously given us fifty spaces on the north campus parking lot. We will be coming to you with a letter of agreement at the July sixteenth meeting so that our police department can go on private property to issue tickets, because this parking lot will be for staff and residents only. And the, the college would like our aid in being able to ticket should people who would not, should not be using the lot be in the spaces. The next step was to figure out onsite accommodations, because, especially after a long, hot travel to the beach, when you get there, you want to be made welcome, you want to see a smiling face, and you want to get to that north end and get to the water, because it was very warm down there this weekend. So we have instituted some onsite shuttle servicing. This weekend, we used the Croya van, actually, to, to move folks from, with, that walk in with strollers to the lower level. We have lost the use of the wooden walk ramp, so we have got to figure out how we're going to get those particular pedestrians down to the beach level. Obviously, there were folks that walked in from parking on Westminster and jumped in the van, and of course, we're going to let them do that. And we hope to be able to continue to use the Croya van when Croya is not using it themselves. We've brought in two six-seater golf carts to actually move people from the south lot to the north end of the beach. They can get on with their family and their kids and all their beach stuff and have a ride to that end. I will tell you that it was very well-appreciated by the folks that used it. It also gave our lakefront managers an opportunity to have a one-on-one conversation with folks as they were moving down the property. And it, I think it, it's a tribute to how well this whole incident has been received and how we are managing it, because questions were answered and people were just very supportive of the fact that we had to make these changes. So it was good for staff to hear, but it was also good for the staff to hear residents' feedback as well. We also brought in some pull wagons for those that want to walk the beach, so they can put their stuff in a pull wagon and take it all the way down to the, to the north end and then pick it up and bring it back when they're, when they're heading back to their car. I can tell you that, from my perspective, things seem to run very smoothly down there this weekend. We did have a couple of wait times for launches because of the participants in the regatta. And I'm looking forward to seeing what Fourth of July and the following weekend are going to do and what, what we may need to tweak. This will be, this will be a moving target all summer long, but we, we will hit it. And we will hit it with a smile and positive customer service.
Well, starting with a strong attitude like that, that's the, the best medicine for something like this, and obviously, a lot of capability and skill. But yeah, tell us what the immediate plan is here.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you a few weekend statistics. This is what we captured with staff. You'll see that on Saturday, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-three cars actually park at the south lot. The Belvedere Stairs, which is the main staircase, had five-hundred-and-fifty-five residents walk down them. The non-resident stairs, which is now the wooden stairs, had a hundred-and-eighty-three non-residents and sixty-six residents walk in. So we're still pulling a lot of people, and they're just, they're going to where they need to go so they can access that lower level. And on Sunday, three-hundred-and-twelve cars, four-hundred-and-eleven residents walked in at the Belvedere, and then eighty-three and seventy-two at the non-resident stairs. And I just want to note that these statistics are actually regular beach users, they are not the regatta participants. Pretty proud of the staff, thrilled to be a part of a team that could actually pull this together over the course of twenty-four hours.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
Michael, you want to come back up and?
Yeah, I have some questions for Mr. Thomas. So, Michael, you could just maybe do a broad estimate here, but how much time do you think it would take to go through the normal bidding process? And how much money do you think would be on the table to save? And given the time elapsed to do that, how worse could it get? How stable is the situation? And then the other question I have is, has there been an inspection on the South Beach Access Road? Because, you know, this happened, maybe something else could happen. Just curious if that's been inspected, and if there's anything we can do to try to shore up that so something doesn't happen there, or if that's already been done.
Answer your second question for South Beach Access Road, yes, has been inspected. It was inspected all during the project, not only by our own staff, but AECom as well. So the roadway and the, the bluff adjoining it is in great shape, we just need things to grow, rest to grow. With regards to the bidding cycle, so the example that we use on the north beach ravine, Beach Access Road ravine, if we place that project out to bid July fifth, we are crossing our fingers that construction can begin around September fourth. So the actual bidding part of it, but if you back up before that, you have a design, excuse me, where you need to secure a proposal. You develop a design, you go back and forth with staff to determine, and our engineer to see if we are in, if we work together, if we see the same things. Meanwhile, time is passing on, and that is essentially our big concern, that too much time is going to pass on, and we're going to have to wait until this thing dries out to be able to get heavy equipment on it. As far as dollars, with regards to dollars, will there be an opportunity cost? My guess is yes, because we need something right now, and we want high quality. The opposite to that is that myself and the guys in our public works and engineering staff, along with the guys in AECom, we have a very good understanding of what going rates are. For, if we have a semi, if, if the contractor comes back and says, "I'm going to charge you five-hundred-and-eighty a load to haul out," and we know going rate is a hundred-and-ninety, we're going to speak up and say, "It's not going to be five-eighty. We'll give you two-hundred, but we're not giving you five-eighty." AECom knows that, we know that as well. So with similar projects that have had bid openings, especially the county, Fort, Fort Sheridan, McCormick, we just had one last year down at the cemetery, we've got a pretty good list of what those unit costs are. So we'll be able to check them and say, "Within the range." We assume we'll pay a little bit of a premium, because we need this done now. But barring that, it shouldn't be that significantly higher.
Mike, just to confirm, so you, you showed us three, three problem spots. We are thrilled that the South Beach Access Road was, was taken on and is done. I mean, that's just an enormous blessing in this whole thing to have, to have that, to have that option. We're just going to, we're just going to keep the boardwalk closed for now and not worry about that for now, is that correct?
That is correct.
Or we'll, we'll think about it, but we don't feel the same urgency, because there are other ways to get to the?
That is correct.
Okay, so I think it's important to have the, but doing, we do, it sounds like you're highly recommending doing the, the ravine and now the, and now the bluff at the same time. We are monitoring, as you noted, AECom is monitoring other spots on the bluff. You and I talked today when I was there, looking at this, a little overwhelming, but that, you know, if there's additional monitoring that AECom recommends, I'm sure we could put, this was a, this was a spot, I think, that AECom had been concerned about. So we, a couple of years ago, when we looked at this, we had, we have a, as I recall, it's a multicolor map that shows us the most intensely vulnerable places. So we know where those are, we think. And, and we could, we could probably put some extra tools on those if we felt that was worth doing. I don't know that it is. I mean, what you worry about is this kind of thing happening again. And we've been incredibly lucky that, that, and I, and I think i- if we can get this done, there's a huge benefit to it, in my view, that's my.
And there was surveying crews down there today, they'll be down there tomorrow, and if need be, they'll be down there on Thursday as well. So we have base-level survey data for that entire forest park bluff, and they now are coming back and surveying the whole thing once again to see how much movement there's been, but specifically, the area that has failed.
Director Thomas, I just, we spoke on Friday after I had toured the area. And you spoke, and I'd, I'd like you to share with the rest of the council and with the public exactly how you're proposing to cut back on this bluff a little bit and, and do it sort of in layers, because I think that's significant to, to understand.
When we look at the bluff failure, and we look then at the South Beach Access Road, essentially, we are looking to do a very similar project. So engineering-wise, we need to achieve a two-to-one slope. To do that, you've got to go back into the table land, fifty feet, somewhere in there. And you've got to haul off a halfway decent amount of material to be able to, to get that to happen. The different layers, for example, there is a sand layer about fifteen feet down or so, and that was exposed. That's what caused a lot of this, is that water got down to that layer and everything took off from there. So that's got to get moved out. And that's essentially what, if you take a look at the South Beach Access Road, it's something very similar. What AECom has also discussed is adding some piping, for lack of a better term, to be able to try and pull out some of this water and this moisture, and to be able to evacuate it and get it to our storm sewer system. That is different than South Beach Access Road. We didn't have that issue down there, and we didn't need to install anything like that. But that really would be the only difference. So very similar, very similar in nature.
Yeah, Director, when we talked on Friday, you mentioned that the boardwalk and the wooden steps were not in compliance. So that's going to be closed until it can be redesigned and rebuilt, is that correct?
That will be closed indefinitely. When we spoke with our engineers and they looked at the movement in, on that bluff, a portion of that boardwalk, and it has three legs, is actually at somewhat of a significant angle. So we do not feel comfortable, for example, saying, "Let's take a fifty-foot, fifty-foot piece out and re-level it and put a new piece in." We don't. That bluff is moved, the bluff is going to continue to move. As I spoke with Alderman Beidler today, are there opportunities potentially at that South Beach Access Road to look at putting some type of a walkway system, a switchback or something like that down there? Sure, there are, there's opportunities there. But to remove and replace on that bluff the way that bluff is right now, I, I know our engineering firm would not recommend it.
So, Director Morris, excuse me, Director Harris. To say that we got lucky makes me feel really good and really bad at the same time. I see this as a huge risk management issue, and I'm very concerned that someone's going to get hurt sometime. Could I ask you, and perhaps you'd like to turn it over to the finance director for commentary, but I'm concerned, or perhaps, Mr. Kyler, you'd like to talk to this point. I'm concerned about insurance, I'm concerned about risk management. Something could happen, and I don't know how we cover something like that, and, and I don't know what that something might be. But I, I think about that, and, you know, this is one of our pride and joys, and, and we really prize this asset. So we want to make sure that it's safe and, and, and secure for everyone's use. So if you would address that point, I'd appreciate it.
I can start, if that would be okay?
Go ahead. Answer the hard part of the question.
I hope I get it right. We did, after the October fourteenth rain event last year, if you remember, we received a good amount of rain on July twelfth, and then subsequently on October fourteenth. After that October fourteenth storm, we asked Irma, the city's insurance company, to come and take a look at a handful of sites, our cemetery, our water plant, the North Beach Access Road. They are now just beginning to come back with their results. And essentially, they are telling us that structures, pipes, headwalls, things like that, they will insure. Land, land movement, off the table, it's not part of it, not included. So when we look at, for example, north be, the ravine, the North Beach Access Road, there's potentially some dollars coming back that we could put towards this project, yes. They're still auditing those numbers, and they want to talk with us this week on some of the numbers that our engineering firm came up with. But that is what I can add to that.
No, I think you've done a, a nice job, Mike, because it's not something you can simply say, "We can wipe the risk clean." And probably Bill Weaver can address this better than I, that this is almost a natural phenomenon that has been going on for hundreds and hundreds of years. And despite what we might try, there still is potential for additional sloughing or erosion and other things that are going on. I think when we did the forest park project, you know, we tried to identify a few things that would alleviate some of the, the potential that would accelerate the sloughing. But I think at the end of the day, you know, much like we just learned in the last couple of weeks, if Mother Nature is going to dump this kind of rain on us, I mean, actually, we're probably fortunate that we didn't have other areas that, that went south, so to speak. And we have talked about, you know, in our ravines, how many other properties have lost some of their table land as a result of what's happened just in the last two months. So I think staying on top of it, having Mr. Weaver and AECom come in, monitoring the situations we, you know, put in, I can't remember what you call those things.
Inclinometers.
Say that again?
In, inclinometers.
Inclinometers. But in, in one case, the inclinometer got exposed by the sloughing of the bluff. And so all we can do is continue to monitor it. And when a situation arrives like it did for the, the boardwalk, we just have to say, "No." And I think one of the questions, and I think why Mike is, is sort of dancing around the question on the boardwalk is, I think we have to step back from it and say, "Maybe the answer is not to replace the boardwalk in the future, but to look at other options that are out there." What those are, we don't know. You know, maybe a tram system or this or that, but I think what we want to do is look at it and say, "We're not going to always constantly be worried that we could lose our boardwalk next year or the year after." But what are some of the more structural, permanent solutions that we can come up with that will achieve the same? that we can come up with that will achieve the same result?
One follow-on, unrelated follow-on, unrelated question. The water plant, any risk as a result of this, any changes, anything?
No, there was a ravine adjacent to the water plant hill, the driveway, and there was some erosion that occurred after the, well, both the July and October storms that exposed one of our transmission veins leaving the plant. So we brought Irma down to take a look at that. The contractor that's on site doing our water plant project, we received a proposal from them right away to repair it, and it's repaired, it's filled, it's fixed.
Yeah, I would just say, the only risk is the fact that we're not selling any water.
Yes.
That's the biggest risk. Wait till you see the budget.
I bet.
Mike, in terms of the repair that we're looking to do in the two locations, could you comment a little bit more as to, first, whether this, you know, your plan of action is something that may change once you get into the field and start doing further work, or you feel comfortable that this is the plan and it would provide what, and that's the second point, how much comfort level and confidence do we have that it would withstand the next five point two-five inches of whatever rainfall we have in the future?
Would the design change? Absolutely not. The ravine design has been set, it's going to work, it's been approved by Lake County Stormwater Management and Army Corps. We're very confident in that, we're ready to go out to bid. I had a discussion this morning, a conference call with AECOM and John Keno Company, and we talked about the logistics of the bluff and what type of repair, how would they approach it, how would they go about it? And what I enjoyed from my standpoint, as I sat back and very quickly, as these two guys are talking to one another, said, remember when we did, yeah, I wanna bench this, I want you to go down X feet, bop, 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 bop. It gave me a very good level of assurance that they have done it multiple times together and that the repair that they are proposing to do will absolutely last. One of the things that we're looking at is how many feet north and how many feet south should we actually reshape this bluff? Right now, it's fifty to sixty feet each way, because as Bob noted and Alderman Ray noted, the same thing, as some of you saw this, we don't want this to continue to happen. So we have to take some precautions and reshape some of that area. But as far as the design and how long it will last, I have the utmost confidence, not only in the design, but the engineering firm and the construction firm doing it. I'll stand here for a year from now and tell you, these are the two guys that should do it.
Just to follow up on the ravine side of it, and I think we talked when I had a chance to meet with you on Sunday, looking at different ways of getting that water flow so it doesn't impact the ravine and how it's contoured in the future, is that something important?
Correct. So the project with Army Corps of Engineers, it's interesting, Army Corps of Engineers is concerned about water, the quality of water, because this is waters of the U.S., that all this storm water is draining into Lake Michigan. They care about water quality, plant life, animal life, insect life. Quite frankly, the Army Corps of Engineers could really not care too much about the erosion, which is our number one concern. They care about those other things. So this design really had to focus on slowing that flow of water down and creating, increasing the water quality as it dumps into Lake Michigan. So there's different areas where it's gonna be hitting different blocks, different vegetation, it's gonna then go into a pipe and make its way down to the lake. The ravine as you see it now, and the depth of the ravine as you see it now, that is not the way it will be. It will be a much more shallow ravine. There's gonna be a good amount of fill that's gonna be going in there. But that is the way that the Army Corps now likes to see projects, and it's almost identical to what we did at the cemetery last year. Very, very similar. Keno Construction did that one. So hopefully that answers your question.
By raising then the level of the ravine, it looks like that would help the slope of the bluff, and of course, you're gonna reinforce that area where we did have the failure with rock stones.
Correct. It also will help the neighbor to the north. They are working on repairing their ravine, they're very anxious for us to start. Their repair is gonna be covered under our Army Corps permit, but yes, that is correct.
You know, one thing I would add, that goes back to the nineteen eighty-five beach project and all the engineering that we worked on for that, you know, by definition, really most of the bluffs that face Lake Michigan are what you would call, you know, from a perfect engineering angle of repose of the soils and the great mix of soils, sands and clays and silt and everything else that are in there, are not at any comfortable angle. They're pretty steep. But if it's fifty feet wide, our failure, and it's five hundred thousand dollars, that's only ten thousand dollars a lineal foot to fix it. And so there's the real challenge of, you know, just be careful how you use the bluff, be careful of what you do underneath it, do what you can to stabilize it, but it is Mother Nature's work, and as we learned so much with the beach project in nineteen eighty-five, most all of these bluff failures and sloughs occur from groundwater, not from surface waters running over the top of it, but water getting down, in this case, to the sand layer about fifteen feet below. And just imagine if you had a big infusion of water now flowing into this hung lens of soil, and, yes, about a hundred tons of it let go after a while, because it was just greased. So all these bluffs have this kind of an issue, McCormick, you know, in the ravines themselves, but also on the bluff. But it's a, part of it is just, it's an endless amount of money to, you know, to fully stabilize it, you'd have to claw back the tops of those bluffs, X hundred feet, you know, to do it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's a consensus of the council, we will direct Mike to work with AECOM and Keno to bring a proposal back to your July sixteenth meeting that you can consider at that point in time if you want to proceed or not. And then at the same time, we will also have a parking agreement with Lake Forest College to enforce parking for, until I think it's August sixteenth or when the students arrive, and then we'll get booted out of there, but at least it'll give us a good six weeks of overflow parking that we can use.
Good. Any contrary thoughts?
Absolutely not. I think that's exactly the right plan. I would just comment, we spend so much time on infrastructure here, and I think it's appropriate, especially having seen the site today, but I have to say that the staff, I think Sally, you commented on this particularly, seeing this come together, I was actually, Alderman Newman and I were at a golf course fundraising meeting with Sally as this was occurring, and she was very calmly kinda keeping track of what we were talking about and passing the phone around about the latest image of what was going on. So she was certainly grace under pressure. But I understood, and this is a compliment for the police department, Chief Waldorf, I understood that whoever organized the people who were essentially trapped at the beach when this happened, did a phenomenal job of basically getting them out at the other end by driving along the sidewalk, and that that was handled extraordinarily well, and apparently, some very favorable comments on Facebook about that, so that was good to know. I drove over on Sunday just to kinda see how things were going. I wasn't actually trying to do anything except just take a look at the situation. And Sally's staff was phenomenal, because there were a lot of people who just didn't have a clue. It is, it's important to note that not everybody knew that this had happened. I mean, essentially, eventually they will, and while we were down there today, some people were like, what's going on? What's the, you know, what's the fencing? So, but the staff has risen to this occasion in a dramatic way, and so I think all of us either have a story about that or certainly will before this is done. So all I can say is keep up the good work, it's extraordinary.
How many truckloads of stuff did you take out of there? You know, we're seeing a sanitized picture of how many truckloads was removed.
Bill or Bill? The five hundred?
For the proposed, for the bluff?
Are you talking about what took the stuff out?
Yeah, took the stuff out, yeah.
The slip?
The slide, yeah.
The bluff. Yeah, you and I spoke this morning, I think we're upwards of five hundred truckloads.
I mean, it's just phenomenal, and really, kudos to the, to the staff, both your rec staff and the engineering staff and the, and public works for, you know, snapping to and getting that done, and I'm a little, I don't know how you got the trucks down there, I don't even wanna think about it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. For the proposed repair, be about five hundred. As far as what we hauled off, I think there were twenty-five loads.
Yeah.
So I apologize.
Yeah, yeah.
Still phenomenal.
Well, I think, to Alderman Beidler's point, I think we also have to thank the residents for their patience, because as I heard, the call on Facebook is, we're trapped, send more wine.
I missed that communication.
We would've come.
Well, thank you, Director Thomas.
And that completes my lengthy report this evening.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is committee reports, and in practical terms, I'm going to pull this item from the agenda, somewhat through miscommunication, the principles, conduct and procedures that we, that meetings and activities and members of the council staff that we had talked about at a workshop and so forth. The subcommittee, the now-famous subcommittee of Alderman Morris and Alderman Presley, really intended a transmittal for future consideration at another workshop, so please, Jed, take a moment.
Right, so we had our workshop, a draft came out and was circulated to everyone, and we got lots of comments. With the help of the city manager and the staff, we integrated most of those comments into the next draft, and I'll let Alderman Presley talk about this, but this current draft, which is included in the agenda tonight, is the result of that. But we'd like you to look at it again and to look at if your comments were included or not. I'm gonna circulate tomorrow a reconciliation of comments that, whether they made it into the document or didn't, about ninety percent or more made it into the document, but you'll be able to see what were and what weren't. And in addition, we asked the city manager to circulate it to the city attorney, and so Julie's had a chance to look at it and comment on it, so we'll have that. And the city manager's also circulated to our personnel, Labor Council, to comment on it as well. So it's been a very thorough process, and Alderman Presley, you might wanna comment as well.
Yeah, let me just say one thing before anyone comments. Jed's, or Alderman Morris, has done a really nice job by section highlighting whose comments, who commented in what section, by section, and then what made it and didn't with notes. So I think one of the things is you get all this feedback, some hard copy and some email and some actually typing, right, it was a lot of work, and so really appreciate you doing that. And so I think it'll be very easy to see and understand and go through that. And, you know, our purpose was really just to consolidate something, because so much has changed, to give you a fresh look, but that is coming. And then we're totally open to feedback and a discussion about, well, this was taken out and I really liked it, and/or how come this wasn't put in? Because we really try to think strategically about, this is edits, formatting, and maybe wordsmithing in one pile, and then these are thinkers that are substantive issues either at the council level or at legal. And we really try to triage the updates, and Susan Banks did a nice job helping us as well. And so that's really the spirit of it, and we didn't wanna do anything and make any executive decisions without you. I guess that's what we're just wanting to communicate, and that's why we think the workshop is probably a better format, to go through that ten percent that we're thinkers and what our thoughts were and get your feedback.
So do you want comments back by a certain time? Are we gonna try to do this before the next meeting, or is there no rush?
No, well, we're gonna have to try and schedule a workshop, but first, Jed.
Yeah, I, is this gonna, I would like to see a redline version.
It's hard to do a redline version because there's been so many, it'd be, I found it confusing. That's why I created this reconciliation between the comments and where they are and who made them, and did they make it in.
Jed, I'm not so, I hope this comes out right. I'm not so sure I'm concerned about who said what and whatever, as much as I'm concerned of what was it and what is it? So that I can, because when I started to read that stuff, I was thinking, well, gee, that's not in there, what happened to that? And this and that, and the other thing, and I couldn't reconcile. And I just wanna hope that, I'm just saying, I'm talking about me personally. When I, I just wanna see, okay, what was it? What is it? Because then I'll know whether I agree or disagree, and if I have any, and I have any recommendations.
You can go back to the Word document, and you can do version comparisons, so I'll take a shot at that.
Could you?
So the first version versus the last version, and we'll see what.
Alderman, I think we've got that already. I think Susan Banks did that this afternoon. So we can send you both, and then depending on which one you like.
I mean, more is fine, but I would just, it was that. And I certainly think the workshop, I mean, we, look how much time we spent on those, I was about to say silly decision-making, but they're not silly, they're very important. But, I mean, yes, they were, and well done, and well done. But, I mean, consider the, this project versus that one page, it was kinda like, I thought we were gonna have to discuss this tonight?
No.
Oh, my God.
No, we saved you then.
So be on the watch out for a, what do they call it, a survey monkey?
Whatever, yeah.
And just for clarification, so there's no misunderstanding, please send all comments to me, and I will forward them out to the committee and to the council so that you're not having communications open and do violations of the Open Meetings Act. So please forward them to me, I will make sure they get to the subcommittee, and we will send out Alderman Morris's version of the changes as well as the redline version, so you can look at that. Plus, as the mayor indicated, my office will be doing a polling to see about a special workshop meeting, date for a special workshop meeting to do just this topic.
I also think, to Alderman Beidler's point, if you do read the clean copy and you go, whoa, please provide that feedback, because that may be helping us organize the agenda for the workshop, because I think Alderman Reisenberg's point is very well taken. Here's the starting point, here's the feedback we got by section, by person, and what went in and out, and here's the end result. So it's kinda like balance sheet and income statement, and we're fine to go ahead and provide all of that, but if you have feedback now, you could also send it to Mr. Kylie, and then we'll continue to do this, so.
I don't think this should be negotiated in writing, it should be negotiated verbally among us all on a topic, you know, yeah.
But I will say, Jack, when I went through it, I found enough things, I mean, let me just use this as a very minor example, where it suggests that the city staff should expect us to be adequately prepared for meetings. I think adequately is a really low standard, and I think we should be prepared for meetings. So to me, I could send that to the subcommittee and say, suggest you remove this word, and it's quicker to actually send it and have them take action than for me to, for the presentation I just made on that one word. So I feel like that kinda thing, couldn't that come over the?
All I'm saying is, so now we're gonna have a second redline version, and then maybe a third redline version, and I don't want, I don't think we ought to have redline versions get, we need to be working off the same document, we need to know where we were, and where we're at, so I think we can get to the next level.
Sure. Well, okay. Keep your May twenty-first version at hand, because that's really the...
I gave it to him. I did.
I gave it to Susan Banks.
Well, I, I spent the afternoon comparing my redline version to the actual version, and I have to compliment the committee, because actually, I found pretty much, and you know how extensively I redlined my copy, because you both dealt with it, and I found most of it there. So my compliments to both of you for what you have done. My further comment is, I know that there's that whole yellow section that you wanted some guidance on, and I think some of that also is involved with the ethics ordinance that some of you will remember, we kind of halfway took a look at several months ago. So I would ask that we start doing both of those maybe together. I hate to complicate things, but I think a lot of what's in this document impinges on what's in the ethics ordinance and vice versa, and I'm not sure we should look at them in total isolation, although I hate to further compliment documents, but...
I think, I think we need to be careful that we don't do work that is outside of the PCA.
Well...
I do think it's, it's, it's an interesting thought. And yes, they edge up next to each other, may even conflict. But I think trying to do both at once, we, we have a hard enough time.
Well, I know. I know. But I'm afraid we're gonna...
Let's plow through another round with this and see where we end up. And the ethics piece is a whole body of work and research on a lot of people's parts. So it could drag them both.
Yeah, I thought we were going to start to, once Julie was on board with us, that we might sort of run that by Julie and start to get some of her thoughts on that ethics ordinance.
Well, remember, we sent the ethics ordinance to the legal committee. And so the legal committee will see it for the first time at their July 10 meeting or whatever the date is. So it could be some time before it comes back. I mean, I don't know how extensive the conversation the legal committee will be.
Okay, well, good. I just wanted to be sure that we're kind of working on them simultaneously because...
As a, as a point, did we not approve the changes in the ethics policy or ordinance at a meeting or two before when DeChey made her presentation?
Well, you approved certain administrative directives. The ethics ordinance is a part of the city code that applies to the city council and board and commission members. So that one, I think, is, is what was the original ask.
Fine.
Okay. Okay. Well, then we'll press forward as we discussed on a workshop date and the materials for it. Next item of business on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. We have one person who'd like to speak, Joanne Desmond, 1681 Yale Court, the oracle from the West.
Sorry, I'm, I'm here all the time, I guess. First of all, I'd like to say, shout out to Sally, because I was one of those people who stood on the beach for 200-degree days watching the regatta. My granddaughter was in it. And it was amazing how you pulled it all together. I can't imagine how you did it, but lots of positive comments were said. So that is a testimony to how the city can work together when everybody's on the same page. And I would like to use that as an example of working together. One of them is to request that a resolution gets passed, Julie Morrison's resolution by the city council, and to also ask the city council to take some leadership in a, working through legislation that would similarly require an EIS for this kind of a project coming through our community. I do, I learned some very unfortunate news today when we received a number of FOIA's from WISDOT. And in that information, we learned that the third rail is indeed going to be part of the EA that will be released. We learned that there was not, they're not going to be considering any freight impact, just looking at the Amtrak. We also learned, very interestingly, in the FOIA documents, and these are from WISDOT, and this is post-Metra's letter, that the third rail in Lake Forest is not needed for the Amtrak expansion to 10-round trips. But they decided to put it in because Metra included it as part of their long-range, 20-year vision. So it is indeed in the documents that we have read that have gone to the FRA. I'm happy to share those with you. I will send out the EA chapter for everybody to look at, or those of you that are interested. So this is really important. I see how you work so well together when a crisis hits our community. We really, really need to work together to make this not happen to our community. So I'm asking you to take the leadership. We are with you 100%, but we can't do it all. We know you've taken some, we know you've done some extending with Metra. It obviously isn't enough. We do know that Wisconsin, it's WISDOT that is pushing this. In fact, the most recent communication from Quandell and WISDOT excluded IDOT in some of the communications. So there's a lot going on. WISDOT is pushing this, and they don't care about the impact on Illinois. They need it to get employees from Milwaukee to Foxconn. They don't care what happens to our state. The entire negative impact falls on Lake Forest and Glenview at this time. Please do something so that this crisis doesn't happen to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Do send that information on, maybe to Mr. Kylie, so we can get it circulated.
We're still looking through WISDOT volume, information from WISDOT. But some of these pieces, this is all hope the letter from Metra.
Right. I, I hear you. And this is news to me tonight, obviously. As much as WISDOT or any other state may pine to do something in another state, there's a certain, what's the word?
Our governor is the only one who can really stop it, who I have this thing.
Yeah, well, anyway, Illinois has its own authorities, and not everybody's in favor of this. So, okay, good. Thank you. Any other citizens to address council? Next item of business, or items for omnibus vote consideration, we have three this evening. Approval of the June 18 city council minutes. Second, consideration of an ordinance amending sections 9415 and 9421, open fires of the city code. This would be the second and final approval. Third, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee in awarding the contract for the Southwest Lift Station Force Main Replacement Project to IHC, try and say that fast, to IHC Construction Company, the amount of $345,560 plus authorization to expend, if necessary, an additional 10% for unforeseen change orders that may occur during the administration of this project. As we have done in the past, we can pull any items for separate approval. However, at this point, are there any particular questions about these three items? If there are none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Second?
And then this is a roll call vote by the city clerk.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item of business on the agenda is new business. And there is one item, no, two items, two items. Approval of the local agency consultant agreement with Civil Tech Incorporated, the local public agency agreement for federal participation with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the Everett Road-Waughegan Road intersection improvement project, and authorization to allocate non-budgeted funds for the city's 20% share. And just the person, we, wait a minute. I was thinking, I was gonna, Robert L., Superintendent of Engineering, who knows. But we have Michael Thomas.
I'm not Bob Els. I wish Bob Els was here. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are looking for approval for the local agency agreement. So essentially, the city has applied for the grant. We have received the grant. We have completed Phase 1 design. This is approval for Phase 2 design, and then as well as construction. The agreements go down to IDOT, and once they are approved, then we can proceed with Phase 2 design, which is the actual design of the project. That design has to go back to IDOT, be approved, then we can place the project out to bid. So at the time, our budget meetings in November and March, the 20% share, the dollars were not allocated at that point because we had not received the official sign-off from the State of Illinois. Week and a half ago, two weeks ago, we received the paper back, the paperwork back from the state approving, which then essentially gives us the green light to tell Civil Tech to proceed with design. That is why the dollars, although we discussed them with the finance committee, they were not officially budgeted. So that is for the request this evening to accept the grant officially and allocate those non-budgeted dollars. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
Understood. Just one broad question. I didn't notice in the materials any particularly different design objectives or elements or changes. Is that still the case? Is that a fair estimation at this point?
The, the, the design objectives mirror, mirror what was presented in Phase 1 design. So if we go back and make any significant modifications, we have to start back to the very beginning again. So Phase 2 design is based upon Phase 1 design that has been reviewed and approved by IDOT. We essentially have to follow that train, that, that track that was provided in the Phase 1 design.
Okay.
Cannot, cannot modify from there.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Director Thomas, have we done other, others of, I don't, I don't remember in my tenure as an alderman, doing other of these kind of projects that we went through IDOT with an intersection that was something that needed improving? Have we done this before? Do we have a track record on this kind of thing?
I am quickly thinking about our intersections at Old Elm, Wesley, 4160 Waughegan. Not off the top of my head. We have done various bridge projects where there is dollars coming from the state and reimbursed in the city as a 20% obligation. But intersections...
Wesley and Sheridan may have been done through this process when we reconstructed that.
Before it was, Sheridan was given to the city of Lake Forest. Okay. I know one of the projects that we are also looking at is Wesley and Waughegan. So that project actually, the design is complete, and we continue to apply for grants through this. They have got a very detailed scoring sheet that they go through, and it hasn't hit the numbers yet. But that's one that we hope to be able to do next.
Can I just follow up? So in, in the write-up, and I realize you're not Bob, but I'm, but I know you know, you know this, this stuff probably too. So this was originally looked at as part of the proposed residential development, but that didn't happen. But there was still considered enough, that this was an important enough intersection to improve, that, that project kept going. So this has been going on now for nine years, I guess. That's probably, at least it's moving, I guess that's something, since it's a state, state's involved. Okay, okay. But so this, it didn't, the fact that the residential project didn't come in, didn't, there was still urgency about getting this done.
Yes, without question. And as you noted, this project, we have been asked about this project in many, many ward meetings for many, many years. And as we have responded each year, we, we need to acquire state funding. And we were finally successful in doing so.
Because it's on Waughegan Road? Because it's a state road?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Although it's a very expensive project.
Good.
Right, right. Any other questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did want to point out that this matter was before the Public Works Committee at our last committee meeting. Bob Els was there and did do an extensive explanation, besides the good work of Mr. Thomas. And it did appear quite apparent that this is going to help with the traffic flow, and it's also going to help, we think, with the safety aspects for that intersection. The one comment, though, I would like to add is, and this came up at the fourth ward, which the ward that this intersection is within, did come up at our meeting of, can we do anything about traffic on Everett that's going westbound to allow a right turn lane? Because there's a lot of backup, particularly when the gates are down, creating congestion there. And what was decided at the Public Works Committee is, this project, in terms of the lane structure that is included here, is too far along to try and reconfigure the issues for looking at this other aspect. But, you know, we did encourage staff to continue to look at the question, and particularly in light of, let's say, some questions on the southeast corner of that intersection, and whether there's maybe opportunities there for having some additional land space to allow for a reconfiguration on Everett going westbound into that intersection. But again, that was put on the side because we didn't want to interfere with the progress and the implementation of this development.
Correct. And we did, we did look at that at a staff level. If, in fact, at some point in the future, without modifying the lane configuration, and if we were to put a westbound Everett right-hand turn lane, we would effectively be about 10 feet from the rectory from St. Pat's, where the priests live. We would be that close to the building. That's not to say, as you had mentioned, old Bushman, that we can potentially modify that intersection, but that would be a different project sometime in the future.
All right. Other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes. Well, we're at the opportunity for public comments.
Okay.
Please, if...
It's a question related to this. And my name is Dennis Smolins, and I live at 1100 Sir William, which is right around the corner. It occurred to me, after being at the Building Review Committee for the Water Works project, that it was a very congested site. But there were questions being asked about access into the site. So then I went down to Water Works in Northbrook and noted that there is a right turn lane dedicated to going into the site, going southbound, and a left turn lane in the middle of the road going northbound. So I started doing a little bit more research on it. And I have a document, which I'm happy to share with the city council, that indicates that IDOT, it would prefer, or initially requested, that there be a right turn lane added into that site. And then they said, because of the queuing for the left turn lane to go west on Everett, they could not get a right turn, a left turn lane into the site going southbound. So basically, that document was further confirmation of very congested. But when this proposal came up, this is the question, would this right turn lane change this particular project if that's required by IDOT? So should you wait for that Water Works decision to be made before you proceed with putting left turns and right turns and through traffic? Because you may rethink this whole intersection.
We'll try. So you are referencing a right-hand turn lane northbound Waughegan into the proposed waterway. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
A dedicated right-hand lane, which when you go to the site, would go, would take out streetscape going down considerably.
Sure, sure. I, to answer your question, I do not believe that would impact this design. This design has an elongated left-hand turn southbound from Everett. It has, as you're heading eastbound from Telegraph at Everett, it lengthens the right-hand turn lane, the southbound turn lane. And then as we come south on Waughegan Road, it, we create a new right-hand turn lane as well. So heading northbound on Waughegan Road, if in fact this development were to, to come and they were to put a right-hand turn lane, no, I do not believe that would impact this proposed project.
Interesting. Well, interesting observation. But we'll, we'll obviously need to keep this in, in mind because it's, as all the West Side evolves, there's really, obviously, an evolving picture of traffic movements and lanes and safety issues and so forth.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the public? If not, is there a motion to approve the consultancy agreement?
So moved.
Second?
And this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The second item of new business is consideration of two recommendations related to construction of a Hyatt Place Hotel in Conway Park in accordance with the Building Review Board's recommendation, and also a resolution directing the city manager and the city attorney to finalize an agreement, and also authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement on behalf of the city. So to present this, Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community Development... So to present this, Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community Development, and, um, the city manager, Robert R. Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This matter was before you at your last meeting. Um, at that time, you did grant first reading of an ordinance in support of the recommendation from the Building Review Board. Uh, so that ordinance is back before you, along with a resolution which would authorize the mayor to, uh, execute an agreement for an economic incentive agreement. Um, just to step back for a review, and I also will apologize for the screen up there because that's a little darker. That, uh, the video screen there in the back is, is better, and I know you as well have your video screens. Uh, the site proposed for development is located in Conway Park. Um, it is, um, on the west side of Field Drive. It is a nine and a half acre site. And, uh, it is one of, uh, a very few number of lots that are still available in Conway Park for development. Uh, to take a little bit closer look, uh, again, this is the site adjacent to the tollway. Uh, just north of Route sixty, um, at the entrance to Conway Park. Um, and you see the, the multiple office buildings, uh, located in this area. The nearest residential is Willow Lake. There was a question last time about the visibility of the hotel from those residential homes. Uh, we've looked at that closely and you do have a number of office buildings, um, in the space between the homes in Willow Lake. And you have the graduate school, um, a three-story office building, and then you have, uh, the, uh, the PCA building and then, uh, the four-story Pfizer building. So any views from the residential property, uh, through that vegetated buffer, um, over to this site really are, um, those views already are, um,
Occupied.
affected by existing office buildings. Uh, so it doesn't appear that there would be any views directly toward that office building. Uh, just to step back a moment, uh, and to talk about the zoning in the area. Uh, the color is not showing up well on this screen, uh, but you will see that Conway Park is zoned OR two. That is, um, an office research district. That district was established over twenty years ago when this property was annexed to the city. Uh, for over twenty years, the OR two district has by right allowed the opportunity for a hotel to be developed in Conway Park. Uh, there was always a vision that a hotel would be appropriate to support the, uh, corporate headquarters located in the park. Um, there, uh, as I mentioned, there are a couple other vacant properties in the park. Abbott owns two, uh, one to the south and one to the north of their existing buildings. Uh, those properties are actually approved for, uh, essentially, uh, buildings that would replicate the existing, uh, Abbott building that's there. There is also a vacant parcel, uh, which we, uh, refer to as the berm parcel. It literally is a berm. Uh, it's up against the oasis, um, and really is not, uh, a practically developable site. Um, there has been some discussion about the Amberly parcel as part of, uh, this discussion. The Amberly parcel, as else, as you, you will note, is actually zoned, uh, differently than the Conway Park Office Park. Uh, the Amberly parcel is zoned, uh, transitional district. And Amberly Woods at the time of annexation, um, about twelve, fifteen years ago, I don't remember exactly, was zoned transition district. And at that time, uh, what was then a forty acre site was approved for development with the south half developed for twenty-four single-family residential homes. The southeast quadrant, uh, approved for development with two forty-two unit condominium buildings, one of which is constructed. Uh, the other, uh, which, uh, we actually have in for permit. Um, and then the eight and a half par, eight and a half acre parcel at the northwest quadrant of the site, um, actually on the southeast corner of Saunders and Route sixty, um, was approved, approved for non-residential uses. Uh, the special use permit and the annexation agreement as it stands today approves two, uh, thirty-two thousand square foot office buildings on that site uh, and approves the existing, uh, home on the site for adaptive reuse for various uses. Uh, a bank, childcare, restaurant, and, and some other uses. Um, it, it is important to note, as, as I mentioned, that, uh, Conway Park and the parcel owned by Jenko, the Jenko Group, now proposed for the Hyatt Place Hotel, um, had the zoning required for an office bill, or for a hotel. Uh, there was a requirement, uh, for review of the design aspects of the proposal by the Building Review Board. You heard me speak to that at the last meeting. Um, the Amberly Woods parcel would need to go through an entitlement process. Uh, both the annexation agreement would need to be amended to allow a hotel, restaurants, apartments, any type of use other than the two office buildings now proposed. Um, and, uh, a new special use permit would be required. So there is a difference in process. As we, uh, sit here today, we have not had an application submitted for review of that parcel for any type of development, uh, from the current owner who has owned that property for about, uh, two years. Although we've had multiple discussions, multiple meetings, we've seen various plans. Uh, at least to staff's knowledge, there is no, uh, solid plan or even a, a strong conceptual plan that's ready to come forward to the Plan Commission. So just moving on from that background, uh, just to review briefly, as I said, uh, the site before you tonight proposed for the Hyatt Place, a nine and a half acre parcel, about three and a half acres, um, along the Field Drive street frontage is proposed for development with a hotel. Um, five stories of rooms above, uh, first floor of, of various amenities. Um, parking on site, landscaping, uh, the building as, uh, recommended by the Building Review Board uh, really is a step above, uh, what you would normally see with hotels. Um, you have, uh, brick facade, uh, two colored bricks. You have massing that's, that's really broken down, um, in three forms, um, smaller forms on each side with an accent in the middle. Uh, the building itself is sixty feet tall, uh, at the top of the main mass. Buildings of up to seventy-five feet are permitted in the OR two district. And above the seventy-five feet, um, the, uh, screening for rooftop mechanicals is permitted. Uh, the, uh, the center element, in addition to being an act, an, an entrance accent, uh, does serve to screen the rooftop mechanicals. And at the very, uh, top, uh, that point is seventy-seven feet. So it is consistent with the code requirement which allows the main building to be seventy-five feet and the screening for the mechanicals to rise above that. Um, just to, very quickly, and again, I, I know this isn't readable from the, uh, audience, but, um, you do have, um, a, a lobby. Um, there was some discussion about restaurant. There is a, um, a, a small bar, uh, ca, uh, and a cafe area, so it is not a full-service restaurant. Uh, you have more meeting rooms than are ordinarily incorporated into this type of a hotel. Uh, that was in direct response to meeting with the Conway Park Owners Association. Um, you do have a fitness center and a pool as well. And then the standard, uh, floors above offer a variety of room types. Uh, part of what is before you tonight is a, uh, resolution that would authorize, as I said, the, the mayor to execute the economic incentive agreement. Um, that agreement was negotiated, reviewed, amended by a subcommittee of the city council, uh, the mayor and finance committee chair. Um, you do have, um, financial information about anticipated revenues in your packet. Uh, in February, this council authorized, uh, uh, the hiring of Michael Tobin, a consultant. He is here tonight and is available to answer your question. Uh, he was hired in February, uh, as I stood before you at that time. We did expect, based on a, a conversation, um, staff had had about the Amberly Woods project, we expected both of, um, these projects to come forward at the same time. And we had Mr. Tobin teed up to have those discussions. One materialized and moved forward, uh, submitted plans. The other did not, at least as, as of this time. Um, so I, I believe most of the questions on the agreement center around section seven tonight. Um, so I just wanted to speak to that for a moment. Um, section seven has been modified. Uh, the Jenko Group did ask for a pretty extensive moratorium, uh, on the city's ability to offer any other incentives to a future hotel in the west part of the community. Uh, the subcommittee of the city council pushed hard on, on really limiting that, um, tightening it up and, um, almost to some extent neutralizing it. Um, what that agreement does is it would, it would prohibit the city from authorizing incentive payments for a limited period of time, four years from the effective date of the agreement. The provisions in that section do not allow the effective date to essentially roll forward and, um, extend that four-year period. But, uh, the agreement establishes September thirtieth as a hard date, an outside date for the effective date. Um, importantly, no incentive payments could be made to a competing hotel during the four-year period. However, there is nothing that would limit the city from reviewing other proposals, from negotiating other agreements. And in fact, those agreements could, uh, be configured in a way that would allow accelerated payments at, at the front end of the payment period, which would start after the four years if in fact the, the council found the project to be, uh, unique enough or appropriate enough or meeting the seat, the city's needs enough to warrant an incentive. Um, the incentive, any incentive agreement would be considered by the city council very specifically related to each particular project. Um, and then finally, just before I, um, open it up to questions to me or, or Michael Tobin, um, what is before you tonight is a recommendation to grant final approval of the ordinance that approves, uh, the design aspects of the project as recommended by the Building Review Board and a recommendation to approve a resolution that would direct the mayor to execute an economic incentive agreement. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. And again, Michael Tobin is here and is ready to answer your questions as well.
Uh, thank you, Kathy. I, I think as we've done before, um, I'd like to have a round of questions that, uh, ask for factual answers and clarifications. Um, and then we'll have a final round in the council, uh, for points of view, when as and if people wish to say that. We, we have one, at least one additional report, and then questions I think could also be asked of Kathy and, uh, Mr. Tobin as well. But we, we've had.
Sure.
Inspection tour.
Yes, we had a road trip.
Road trip.
Um, the, uh, Mr. Jenko invited us to come to Milwaukee, all the council members. And Alderman Rummel and I took him up on that offer and rode up to Milwaukee. And I brought back some literature, which I'll pass around, so you can see, uh, what we saw. Um, but just a comment, it's, like this proposal, it was a modern, six-story, very clean, very well-architected, um, building. Uh, it's located in the Brewery District, which if you're familiar with it, sits up above the city. And this property looks down over the new sports arena and over the city. Uh, we, it was the second day of operation, so we had a chance to talk to the, uh, city staff. Mr. Jenko and Mr. Perrington were there to meet us and they introduced us to the, uh, Hyatt management. And I would say they were, they were an impressive group. They had gone through a lot of training. They were ready for the operation. In fact, uh, President Trump was in town, so the hotel had been entirely filled by Secret Service. Uh, for the, for the second day. He was quite happy about that. Um, but it does have an outdoor patio and a bar that looks out over the sports arena and over the city, so that was an attractive area. It had a small kitchen, breakfast area, lunch area. But I had two takeaways from that. One was food, uh, and one was the meeting space. So I'll pass around, uh, a menu that I took from the, the, uh, from the hotel. Uh, on the food side, it was, um, interesting. It was really breakfast and lunch. Uh, the management said they expected their guests to use their bar, but to go out to local restaurants for dinner. They did not expect them to stay in the hotel for dinner. Um, they said that that was the Hyatt model, was to collaborate with local restaurants for food service. Um, the other one was meeting space. And Alderman Rummel made a very, uh, insightful discussion about meeting space because I think, and I'll let her talk about this, but she commented that in her experience, there's not good meeting space for large groups in southeast Lake County. And asked about the, uh, ability to, um, have meeting space that would accommodate two hundred to two hundred and fifty people. And they, uh, Mr. Jenko replied that our meeting space in this hotel would be twice what was in Milwaukee and should be able to accommodate that, but subject to more discussion with Alderman Rummel. Um, we, um, also talked about the, um, catering of the food for all of those occasions, be it a business meeting, a not-profit meeting, a social meeting. All of that would come from local restaurants or local caterers, not produced on-site, uh, at the hotel. Um, and I think it's an important point, uh, because that has an implication, or may have an implication for Amberly Woods and what happens over there. Um, this is, again, not intended to be a destination's, uh, for, uh, food service. It's a hotel. Um, but I'll maybe turn it over to Alderman Rummel and let you comment on your observations.
Well, I just, again, to say thank you for your hospitality, uh, Mr. Jenko and Mr. Perrington. It was a very nice visit and I know it was a very busy day for you to sort of take. The time that you took with us is very much appreciated. Um, it, yeah, we had a little discussion, um, and anyone who has tried to get a large group for a sit-down dinner in, uh, the immediate area might have run into some of the same challenges I have with certain not-for-profit groups. There is, other than the Marriott Lincolnshire, it's very difficult to find space for, say, two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty guests for a sit-down dinner. In fact, one of the groups I'm associated with is, and many groups that I know of have, um, used the space at Lake Forest Sports Cars. And thank you to the sports car gods for letting not-for-profits use that space. And I know, uh, for this particular group, for the next, uh, venue, we're going to Harley-Davidson. And thank you to Harley-Davidson, who's been in the news lately, for, uh, letting us use that space. They're very civic-minded. So my suggestion was that perhaps their, uh, convention or meeting room space could be expanded to accommodate some of those groups. Uh, even the country clubs in the area, you find yourself having to erect tents to accommodate that number of people. And I think the consensus was it was the addition of just a few more feet to their already planned meeting space. They could potentially accommodate a group of that size. So, um, so thank you for considering that in your proposal.
Any other, uh, questions of staff or?
Um, yes, so Director Zerniak, I just had a question. Can you paint the picture on the last twenty years? It's just surprising that there isn't a hotel there already. And I was just wondering what happened, other than the financial recession ten years ago? And, you know, how many developers came to try to ta, take a good swing at it, but couldn't make a go of it? And just some backstory here, because I, I think it's, it's important to understand that.
I don't know that anyone has taken a good swing at it before. There certainly, um, has, has been conversation. There's been interest. And, um, I, I think this is the first time all the pieces fell together. This, this site was available. Um, the Jenko Group stepped up. Um, the economy perhaps was, was appropriate. I think we have strong corporate partners in the park, um, who really supported it. Um, I also think, um, the Jenko Group brought a quality of hotel that the Conway Park Owners Association supported. I think that's, uh, been a bit of a problem in the past. They, they've really looked for a certain level of quality and, uh, the, the meeting rooms have been part of that, as well as the brand, architectural fit for the park. Um, so I think that's, uh, this, this is the first time all of those pieces have really come together.
I have one question.
Just, just, just a formal thought here, uh, be, because you mentioned the, uh, Office Owners Association, because they actually have a formal right of approval, just, which is an interesting layer or, or, you know, the immediate neighbors having a say, obviously, in this particular use.
Kathy, has anything changed in what we're being asked to approve tonight versus what we approved two weeks ago?
The, the council took action on the Building Review Board ordinance two weeks ago. You didn't.
You didn't take any action on the resolution. What has changed is, not the resolution, the agreement, the economic incentives agreement. Section seven has been refined, really at the direction of Finance Committee Chairman and the mayor, to really tighten that up, and, again, to really limit the scope of any moratorium, and to really tighten this up so it really meets the purpose of simply trying to give this hotel a chance to get stabilized before another comes in. Truth be told, because we don't have anything else on the table, and there would be an entitlement process that needed to be gone through, a four-year timeframe isn't that extensive. You know, my sense is we'd be two, three, three-and-a-half years in before any other hotel could even pull it all together and move forward. So what has changed is section seven has been tightened up, the moratorium aspect has been really limited with the sole purpose of giving this first hotel really some breathing room, to let it get off the ground and get stabilized before the city's offering incentives to another hotel. Importantly, as I said, that would not prohibit the city from beginning consideration or considering zoning entitlements, or even entering into an agreement that could establish a schedule for incentives that could begin after the four-year period.
Thank you.
If I can just clarify that last point, I didn't mean to interrupt. Just on that very last point, as to this four-year, and this slide is very helpful, and you talk about it doesn't prevent us from doing things in anticipation of providing incentives beyond the four-year limitation period. Does that include the ability of the city to go forward, for example, amending the annexation agreement, going forward to act on a SUP, and making decisions based upon that, including, as I understand, even entering into an agreement, but provided that the agreement does not conflict with the terms of this commitment?
Correct. The way this is written now, which is different from what was before you at your last meeting, allows all of those things to happen, which in and of itself is a significant process to amend an annexation agreement, get a special use permit. As you know, developments that come before the plan commission and ask for entitlements take some time.
Kathy, I've got a question about parking. Last time you mentioned that the parking matched the requirement to have as many parking spaces as rooms. So how many parking places are there?
I believe 184. It's on that first sheet.
Okay, okay. So 184, and that would accommodate a meeting? Is there enough space, then, if, assuming some people might come to the meeting who would not be residents in the hotel? How does that work?
The parking as currently proposed exceeds the city's requirements, and I, as we've heard it explained, is that you have the hotel parking for guests, most often filled up in the evening, and you have that turnover. There also is the opportunity here, because a portion of the site will, in the future, be developed with an office building, that there likely will be some type of an opportunity for a sharing agreement. So as it sits today, the parking proposed on the site exceeds the requirement, and it's my understanding that Hyatt is not going to shortchange themselves on any site. They certainly want to make their site work.
Can I just, one more question. Are we going to vote on both elements of this at the same time? Or is this going to be one vote or two votes?
Two votes.
Two votes.
All right.
Couple of questions, and I'm playing a bit of catch-up here, so forgive me if you've covered this at the last meeting. I'm not that familiar with economic incentive agreements for development of real estate broadly. So my first question is, the incentives are based on a percentage of revenue, which struck me as why not a percentage of net earnings, or earnings before tax, or some other element of income statement analysis?
I also am not an expert on incentive agreements, and here's where I'm going to invite Mr. Tobin up to answer your question, if you don't have any others for me.
It's actually a percentage of the tax revenue that would be received from the hotel tax.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not on revenue at all?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Right, you're correct.
That's what I was hoping it was. Thank you.
Yes? Right, okay.
Second question, in the force majeure clause, it's a subsection four, I think, of the incentive section. I would ask that we add a clause to that at the sole determination and discretion of the city of Lake Forest. You know, if there's more than one force majeure, if there's a force majeure that one person thinks is a force majeure and we don't, I just think that we should have the right to decide what a force majeure is. I'm sure it's defined in the agreement from a legal perspective, but I think that we should have discretion over that. I'm thinking floods, I guess. I don't know what I'm thinking of. I just, I want to make sure that we've got the right to, at our sole discretion, determine that that is indeed qualifies as a force majeure as defined in the agreement. So I would ask-
Can you just say what page you're on?
I actually-
You're on that, you're in the incentive document?
It's-
I think it's subsection four.
6A4.
Thank you.
And I would maybe ask if the city attorney has any comment in response to that.
Yeah, I'm looking for the language, too, so.
6A4.
I'm on page-
Page four of the document of 60 of the, 80 of the packet.
That's right. Thank you. And then you just, one other comment, just get back to this screen. I wasn't clear on the geography of the protections, the limitations. What's the geography for the protection under the incentive agreement? Does it go all the way to Waukegan Road when we're talking Conway Park? I didn't, I just didn't capture that.
I need to look that up myself. I believe it's 1,000 feet.
To the e, I think it's both sides, to east side of Waukegan Road.
That just seems like a half of Lake Forest. I don't understand that. Why isn't it more focused on this geography as opposed to half of Lake Forest?
Well, we could ask Mr. Tobin, but I'll just say it's sort of the economic zone for any given hotel, or the competitive area, and the idea is, you missed the last meeting, but it is very difficult to economically create and succeed at building suburban hotels. It's been a very difficult process. There's a long, unique history to hotels. And so, one of the things is that when a hotel can kind of finally come to an intersection, you know, on the interstate, near a business community, you know, what we're doing here is you want it to succeed. So there is a very important self-interest on the part of the city and its citizens to make sure it's successful, because in the first, what, 15 or 18 years, whatever it is, this generates some, the business of the hotel being there generates some $7.8 million of cash to the city. And so, in the long history of suburban hotel development, there are variations, there's well more than 100 variables, that go into sort of baking a cake to make it economically, have some economic incentive, so it's attractive to take the risk and move forward, but also have some reasonable protections that it can get through infancy and become a young adult, and then we're okay, then you're on your own. That's making a very long history very short.
I do appreciate that, and I want this to succeed. I think it's a great idea, but that geography strikes me as really, really big.
Well, it's a competitive zone for hotels. It's also, a lot of it is moot, because-
Right.
It's, it's-
That strikes me as too big, because it's moot.
But if you think about Route 60 coming over, there's nothing that is developable until you get to the Amberly Woods parcel. So it's kind of like-
So why define it so broadly? I, that's, I'm missing that.
So why not define it so broadly if that's, if that's, if that's all part of a trade-off?
Part of this whole baking of the cake is there'll be an uber-conservative credit committee and a construction lending institution somewhere probably in the Chicago area that will say, well, wait a minute, they may go, they don't know anything about Lake Forest. They may go ahead and change the zoning on those soccer fields and make that thing a hotel, and boy, by gosh, we're going to lend $19 million, or whatever the number is, and it's, it comes from that, but from a practical sense for us, doesn't mean anything. But for putting the capital together and launching, you know, some people who don't know Lake Forest, as I say, are very conservative, I don't think we're giving up anything myself, but.
Well, I guess, I'm sorry to belabor this point, but my concern comes in the reuse of an existing building, maybe not at Conway Farms, but I'll take West, the Western Gateway. I could envision, like Levels was repurposed, that there could be a building that's repurposed, and it might be a bank, for example. I stayed downtown last night in a hotel that used to be a bank, and, you know, it was quite comfortable, and that could happen west of Waukegan in one of the bank properties. So why would we limit ourselves?
Yeah, you're talking about many, many orders of magnitude of scale, different, what's the total floor area, square footage of this hotel?
Five stories, there's nothing like that.
A little over 100,000.
100,000 square-foot building.
I accept that.
There's nothing that's even 20% of that, you know, in that zone. So it's, it's, could it be, Levels being in, yeah, but I don't think that's the competitive element, you know, with so many rooms, yeah.
I just feel we've given ourselves a very broad exception and thereby limit ourselves.
Well, I just, I don't think zoning-wise is a practical matter with our comprehensive plan and so forth, there would be, there's any reasonable prospect.
It just, it's not consequential.
But, so I don't really feel we're giving anything up there substantive to the city, but it's, it's-
I think it's a very key point, on them going to the bank and needing to borrow money to do this. So this is really for the bank stuff, for them to be able to do that? Essentially, you know, I'm always fond of saying, giving them the sleeves out of our vest, that's kind of what we're doing, to make this thing work for them, and I just don't believe it's consequential.
This is a four-year window, and two years of that is required for construction. We're not giving away anything.
No, that's exactly, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
I hope we say that three, three years and 260 days from now. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor, are you, is this the time that we should give, I think there's other input on this subject, how do you, yeah, I'm just curious.
True, you're probably, you're right.
Any questions for Mr. Tobin? I know there was a request.
I wonder if Mr. Tobin could just enlighten us. I will admit to being a total neophyte in the area of hotel developments, and I believe that's why we hired you as our consultant, and to look at an incentive moratorium is news to me, and it's new to me, so I wonder if you can just comment on how frequently these things appear in incentive agreements, under what circumstances, in what types of communities do you see this? I just need to be enlightened as to, you know, what you're seeing in the market and the reasons for this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You might introduce yourself here.
Yeah, I thought I had to do that for the record. I'm Michael Tobin with CBRE, and I'm a real estate consultant. I have to compliment all of you for answering the questions that were asked of me, because you did a very nice job. So to your question, the issue is not really hotel development, it's any type of real estate development that's revenue-based. So whether it's a hotel generating rental revenue, which hotels do, or apartments or offices, it's an imbalance between the revenue that may be collected, which is determined by the market, and the cost of producing and operating the real estate. So the need for the incentive here is not truly specific to the fact that it's a hotel, but that the use cannot generate enough revenue with the room rates or rents that the market will support, but the cost of construction is very expensive, which is not particular to this project any more than many others. It's one of the reasons you haven't seen a lot of hotels being developed, whether it's in Lake Forest or on the North Shore, because there is not sufficient demand to drive the revenue high enough to support the cost of new construction. In terms of your question of is it common, is it frequent to have incentives and restrictions on competitive projects, I think the answer is fair to say it's not frequent, because if it was frequent, that would mean people are building things that the market doesn't demand in the first place. So the fact that you have a single hotel that requires incentives is the reason to say that these incentives should be limited until this hotel is established, so that you don't have overbuilding in the market. What's happened in other cities, perhaps where there hasn't been constraints on the amount of incentives, is people come in and they ask for incentive for competitive projects, the market gets overbuilt, and again, it doesn't matter whether it's a hotel, or office space, or apartments, just people build more than the market will allow. Sometimes it's not because of incentives, sometimes it's because of the availability of financing. Lenders are eager to lend in markets that they perceive as being very strong, they go past the tipping point, they lend too much, more projects get built, and then they, all the projects suffer. So I don't know if that really addressed your question specifically.
So what, so what I'm, my takeaway is that, and I don't know that you answered, how frequently you see these in hotel projects specifically. I mean, we have an example right across the tollway in Matawa of two hotels, one next to the other, and it's my understanding that there was not this, what we're going to call it, incentive moratorium in those agreements, but they may have been a little bit richer on the revenue give-back side. So, you know, obviously, those hotels, and I understand they're doing pretty well, I don't know, you might have a take on that, you know, and on what this market is that we're dealing with. So you're telling me, I guess, that this isn't a very strong market for hotels to be coming into, and that's why we would need to give an incentive agreement like this? Is that your conclusion?
That's true.
Well, but I think you're also incumbent, and your answer is the thought that it's an insurance for the city towards ensuring that the hotel succeeds so that the future stream of payments will come to the city. So it's a defense mechanism to make sure this infant gets to adulthood, to make sure it works. Is it really necessary in some senses? Maybe not, but there's not pandemonium to create a lot of hotels in Lake Forest, and so let's make these work one at a time.
But can you answer my question about how frequently do you see these in hotel developments?
I see it, I'm going to use the term common as opposed to frequent. So in communities that would like to encourage development that the private market is not allowing to happen, it's very common. Sometimes communities have master plans that determine the supply sort of artificially, that they say, we would like to have these types of uses, but we only need one of them. So they'll go forward with an incentive program that meets with the master plan.
So implicit in your reply is that this isn't just limited to hotels, but you're sort of saying in any kind of development that a city wishes to encourage, is what you're saying?
Right. If you take, if you take a look, and I've, I've worked-
About hotels.
I've worked with quite a few of the north suburban communities of Lake. We are a consultant to Glenview, we've been a consultant to Winnetka, we were a consultant to Lake Bluff. Now, in fairness to my answer here, we're employed because they see a need for economic development and economic incentives, so they hire us to help them figure out what to do. But all of the projects that have been done in these communities have been done with economic incentives from the communities. So I don't know if that answers your question about whether it's common, but it's typical-
Incentive, this incentive moratorium is what I'm asking.
Oh, incentive moratorium. The difference, the difference in the other communities around here, and I'll talk in a minute about another project we're doing out of state, it's not a specific moratorium that these communities are doing, but they have agreed internally that they would only incent one project for a period of time. And in many cases, they've had a plan that says, we need to get one project moving forward. forward, and that's all we're going to focus on, and let the private market take care of the rest of it.
Exactly. Thank you.
The other comment that I was gonna make about another city that we're working in, which is in the state of Michigan, they have a state program that is, is defined in advance. You, you have to have a certain-sized project to qualify for incentives in the first place, they will only approve one a year, and the projects are large enough that they're not gonna get one a year even applying for it, because they're, they're just gonna take three or four years till these projects are far enough along that the next one could even consider going into the, the city.
And, and, I'm sorry to monopolize your time, but have you...
We are not monopolizing my time, I'm here to help you.
Have you spoken with the owner of this Amberly Woods project?
We have not, no.
Kathy, is he aware or whoever owns that property, are they aware of this project at this point?
Yes, the owner of the Amberly Woods non-residential parcel is aware of this project, and in fact, in February, when we brought the proposal before you to hire Mr. Tobin, at that time we, and I think we even told Mr. Tobin, that we thought we had two hotel projects coming forward. Again, one came together and came forward, the other has not yet done so.
Right, and, and so the owner of Amberly Woods does know that, that this is going forward with these types of incentives?
Absolutely, I, I met with him maybe two, two and a half weeks ago, and I let him know that this was coming before the council at the last meeting. So we've been very transparent, we've met with him many times, he's, he's known all along that there, there have been other projects moving forward.
Had you discussed incentives with that, with that owner as well?
Yes, that, in fact, that's why in February, when we proposed hiring Mr. Tobin, we said we think we have two, because we also heard that incentives would be needed for any hotel.
And Kathy, just to reiterate your slide there, if, if we approved these two petitions tonight, there's nothing to stop us from considering an incentive agreement with the owner of Amberly Woods, if in fact, they get through the zoning hurdles, and they do everything it's gonna take to bring a project that includes a hotel that we think will be good for the town.
Correct, the, the way this is written now, with modifications that were directed by the finance committee chair and the mayor, this does not eliminate a project, another project moving forward to the plan commission, consideration of zoning entitlements, annexation amendments, building review board approval, or negotiating of an, of an incentive agreement. What this does is simply say, for four years from the effective date, which can be no later than September thirtieth, no incentive payments can be made to another hotel.
Okay, and then just a follow-up question to Mr. Tobin, so then if I'm the developer and I see this precedent, and I'm still in the effective window, it's very easy to address the fact that we can't cut a payment to them over an eighteen-month period by just changing the cash flows of the incentive structure in, in year three and four, correct? I mean, from a, a net present value perspective, they're gonna be indifferent, potentially. Is that...
That's a question to me.
Yeah.
I think I understand the question, I'm not sure that I'm the right person to ask that of, it's not the way I read the agreement.
No, but I...
In the future, yes.
Yeah, I'm talking about...
But some of the timeframes that you talked about are not the way I'm reading the, the language in the agreement. And I think what Kathy is saying is you could negotiate the agreements, but you have a specific time period in the agreement with the, the Janko group that prohibits you from making payments. Your question about will a developer take a look at it from a net present value standpoint and say, well, okay, I'll go forward and I can wait four years till I get my money, that's a question I really can't answer without seeing economics on the pro forma to say, would it even work? Philosophically, I would say absolutely you could do that.
That's all I'm asking philosophically.
But from a pragmatic standpoint, it might not be of any benefit if they, they have to front the money and they can't get reimbursed for four years.
Is that, is that person that, who is, who is working on the Amberly project continuing, Kathy, to do that? As far as we know, is that continuing to be a live project?
Absolutely, I, again, I had a meeting just shortly before your last meeting, we are in touch, we have been in touch for, for two years, we've met regularly, every month, every two months, we've seen numerous different plans with the various mixes of uses proposed, but nothing has come forward, even in a conceptual manner, to be presented to the plan commission. So yes, discussions are very much ongoing, and again, have been very open and transparent, and there's been no secret that the Janko group acquired the nine-and-a-half acre parcel and was also looking at a hotel. I, I believe, in fact, representatives of the Janko group may have even talked to the owner of the Amberly parcel directly at one point in time.
Would this preclude bed and breakfast as well, if someone were to desire that?
It's incentive payments.
I will look to the city attorney on that.
Yeah, and it doesn't prohibit a hotel or any, any use like this, it, it just prohibits the city from paying incentive payments.
But this would apply to a bed and breakfast.
Right, a hotel, a bed and breakfast, anything that wanted to open up could go through the process, they just couldn't receive incentive payments if the city wanted to do that.
Mr. Mayor, Kathy, can you do me a favor and put the rendering up of the building?
Yes.
Because I, I guess I wanna move away from economics for a moment. I've sat here and I've listened to the council fret over a bank going in Waukegan Road, and what happens if we have too many banks, and what happens if it goes out of business? If the bank goes out of business, that's a no-brainer, we can redevelop that property very well. But I know when the committee was wrestling over this, let me tell you something, I would not wanna be the city manager of this community if this hotel goes under, because to find an adaptive reuse of this property is not gonna be easy. And I know, 'cause I have a colleague who's down in Lincolnwood, who some of you are very familiar with, the Purple Hotel down there, that sat very vacant for a very long period of time. So I'm, I guess, bemused by the conversation here, because I would think, knowing the history of our community, we are very cautious about anything, and I think we need to make sure this hotel is extremely successful, and there isn't any thought of another, or this building going under, because you're not gonna easily renovate this to an office building. Likely what you will see is apartments, which will get everybody in an uproar, or an assisted living facility, which will get everybody in an uproar. So I just sort of throw that out there, that yes, there is an economic issue here, but there is a very, very significant land use issue if this doesn't work.
The only way a lender would lend construction dollars to a second hotel is if the first is very successful. That's the only way it's gonna happen.
So there's no threat?
They're not gonna, they're not going to put two properties competing against each other.
This is actually a third property in basically what is less than a thousand-foot radius. There's two other properties on the other side of 294, so what I really haven't heard much of is market projections for a third hotel within that context. I, you know, certainly it's a unique location within Conway with all the office tenants that are there, that's a built-in market right there with some pretty significant tenants in that development, but has anybody seen any projections? We talked about those at all?
Guess Mr. Tobin could do that, or Mr. Janko is here and he could probably do it as well.
Yeah, we went through financial projections based on market.
But I think I heard the phrase pent-up demand twice, and when I went back and watched our last meeting, that, that the, that the two hotels who both receive, Bob, you told us that they both receive incentives from Metawa on an ongoing basis, I, I don't even know if they're capped or how long that goes on and so on, but that they are both a hundred percent occupied during the week, and I guess seventy percent overall, which I think is pretty good for, for hotels, and that that is described as pent-up demand, which should make this a pretty viable, I mean, it looks like a terrific project. I have to honestly tell you, I'm not worried about this problem, project failing, I'm not sure when the right time is for me to say what I am worried about, but it is not this project not being successful.
That's quite a judgment, I mean, you just, you just spoke like an equity owner of a hotel. You, you're, you're saying the risk is not great there.
What's not to like? No, I don't, I don't know anything about hotels, but I know the need is great, I know it's the right kind of hotel, it seems like it has the right team running it, it's terrific design, it's a great location, I like everything about it, but there's a piece about the incentive package that I can't live with, that I'm gonna have to vote against, and I'd like to be able to talk to that at some point, but I'm not, I don't, but I'm not, I don't wanna hijack the meeting, so...
You'll tell us when we can talk about that.
Well, can Mr. Tobin maybe talk to us about occupancy projections? No? Was that a no?
Oh, I was just saying, why don't we just go to the commentary and, I mean, pardon me, I shouldn't have, oof, no, go ahead, ask your question.
I guess, okay, we, we'll do this, but I mean, you can hear a lot of numbers, you stipulated at the beginning, you know nothing about this, so if you hear a whole bunch of numbers about occupancy, what judgment are you gonna bring to whether that's good or bad?
Well, I better bring some judgment, because that's my job as an alderman.
A lot of people, the city staff has been on this for many months. The, a professional hotel development organization came to us with a comprehensive plan that the city, the community development department went through very thoroughly, the building review board has approved, and then the council authorized a subcommittee of the finance chair and myself to go through all this, and in the context of this entire discussion, you can, there's more than a hundred variables go into this, and you can stir the pot and pick one out of there and say, well, I don't know about that, but is that really, it really boils down to whether we want to have a hotel east of the tollway that succeeds, and that success will bring other uses such as hotels to our community on land that we have zoned for that. So we, we can get into the financial analysis of professionals who are using their capital, their investment, who've assessed all these risks, we've brought to bear the, the expertise of a consultant, the finance committee, my experience, the staff, looked at a lot of other communities and these other agreements, done it independently, looked at all that. So, yes, we, we can spend time on this for your satisfaction, but I'm just saying, a lot of people have looked at this thing, and we can keep going on it, but I, I don't think, talking about occupancy, I, I'm just per se, how, 'cause it's a complicated subject, you know, about one man's occupancy is another person's, you know, insufficient level, so I, I leave it at that, it's your call. You wanna talk about occupancy and the market, whether it's ripe or good?
I would like to hear a bit, I just, I don't, I don't know it, so...
Good idea, let's do it.
Please share it.
Mr. Tobin, please.
So I'm gonna speak, I'm not gonna call them generalities, but I don't have enough specific information about the two hotels in Metawa that you're talking about. But the, the way you look at hotel projects is you look at the competitive market set, and there's a company called Smith Travel Report, it's abbreviated STR, it's known as the Star Report in the business. So what we did in, in evaluating the Jankos' proposals is we looked at the Star Reports for the competitive set of products, they were not running a hundred percent occupancy, they weren't even running at eighty percent occupancy, they were in the, the low to mid-seventies, so they look at it over the course of a year, the, and they have average daily rates as well, so we use that, and it is the bible in the industry. Real estate developers, lenders, hotel operators all look at this and say, if I'm gonna do a hotel, what can I project in terms of potential revenue based upon the data that I get from the, the Star Report? So we started with that, and we, we looked at the numbers that Janko had put together, their room rates were a little bit higher than the average in the Star Report for the competitive set, occupancy was about the same, their operating margins were within industry standards, so we looked at it and said that the projections for a new hotel in the market in which it's being built compared to existing product that could compete with it all passed muster, it passed the smell test, it passed the, the data that we had, we brought some independent data to it as well, we also researched on our own other communities in terms of incentives that had been provided, and came to the conclusion that what they were asking for was justifiable in terms of the, the economic analysis. That doesn't mean that if you compare it to a smaller hotel in, in Metawa, that there might not be some, some variances and aberrations there, but the, the other thing you have to remember, this is a franchise, you don't get a franchise from the Hyatt Corporation or Holiday Inn or Marriott or any of the big companies unless you pass their own underwriting as well, and you have to get a lender to do the same thing. So you have lots of steps along the way of everybody doing the same things to evaluate, is this project likely to succeed, and will we get paid back? Hyatt doesn't wanna failure on their brand, they're interested in getting their franchise revenue every month, and it's, it's both the franchise fee and it's marketing fees, and, and that's how they make money. There are some Hyatt-owned hotels as well, and, and Hyatt does manage some of their own property, but their primary business is, is providing a Hyatt branded product to a real estate owner, and they get paid for that. They, they, the lenders wanna be sure that they've got a secure loan, and that whether it's a ten-year loan or a fifteen-year loan, or if you're fortunate enough to get a twenty or twenty-five-year loan, which is very hard on a hotel, that they're gonna have revenue sources sufficient to pay them back. So that's how we looked at the project, we were hired by your, your city not to tell you what to do, but to tell you whether what was being asked was even worth considering, was it in the realm of possibilities, and what's before you today for review and approval is a heavily negotiated number. It's, it's, it's significantly less than what the Janko group had originally asked for. So, you know, I applaud all of you for doing your jobs well, and, and really representing the city to get a good deal for both. And that's, you know, ultimately what, what this is all about. As the mayor pointed out, you don't want a hotel that fails, I can tell you that Gary Janko and, and his partners and his lenders and his, his, his franchisors, they don't want a hotel that fails. And, and you've got people, the, the nice thing about this project is, it's a project that is being developed by local people in town, they're not somebody that's gonna sell this immediately, and that was a negotiated point as well, that this is not a merchant-built product where they're gonna flip it and it's somebody else's problem a year after it's open. So everybody's looking to do a successful project for a community that's home to many of the people that are involved with the project. I'm not, I happen to be a Highland Park resident, but I don't wanna see people failing in Lake Forest either.
Right, but implicit in your reply is, is also the, the market and, and any other hotel that might be interested in looking to come into this market would be doing their own analysis, and in the long run wouldn't come in if they didn't think it was viable.
That's true.
Thank you.
And I, and I do think it's relevant to, to recognize that this isn't speculative, that we actually have another interested property owner who is considering developing a hotel, so to me, I think it's highly relevant that we are aware that, that we're not just talking about something that could happen, but something that is in fact underway, that's on my mind, and that's actually not what I was officially gonna say anyway, but waiting for the right moment.
Well, I mean, let me ask, just, what do you think? I mean, is this other thought about Amberly Woods, is that speculative? At this hour, it's not, it's not called for in the annexation agreement, it would go against a few decades of comprehensive plan about such uses south of sixty, there'd be a special use permit involved, there'd be plan commission, building review board, all kinds of things. We're talking about things in two different timeframes completely that would take place in the careful way that we do things in the city, so I don't see them, this is not a nose-to-nose, first-to-the-gate issue at all, because one, is not even remotely come, hasn't even come forward with a plan, number two, there's a big ask in there, is it, is it not fair to, if you do something, ask for something that's contrary to several decades of comprehensive plan development? And by the way, of course, we're reopening the comprehensive plan, so it's a good time to get into it, but that process isn't gonna end, end, end of the end of 2019, well, again, you sort of consume your way through four years pretty quick, yet it gives the, this important measure of, and I, I go to the credit committees of the lending institutions, why? 'Cause I've dealt with a lot of them, and you just, you wanna make this hotel successful, that's the number-one path for a hotel to take place on Amberly Woods if the city, in its wisdom, decided to do a hotel then. But this thing's gotta succeed first, because I, I just don't know... first. Because I, I just don't know how, you know, two hotels would ever really make it, came coming right out of the blocks, either with the financing program or whatever, to succeed. One at a time is appropriate here. Because, again, I'm just, it's odd, one, I think is rather speculative, is whether it'll ever happen, given what I mentioned. Two, this one is ready to go. It's been around for many months here.
You know, I think you did a great job negotiating that agreement, and I think it is very tight and very well-negotiated. This is the only thing that I have an issue with.
What is that, Melanie?
That, that we are setting a precedent here.
There is no precedent.
Of, of giving, of this moratorium, this incentive moratorium. And we've never done this before. And I don't see why someone else wouldn't come in and expect us to do the same thing years down the road. And I'm not sure that in this instance, it's necessary because I think, A, the market will take care of whether another hotel comes in, and B, by what everyone has said, it would be as much as three and a half years.
May I, okay, we, we, we're into commentary. We're out of Q and A. Why don't we go to commentary, 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 and vote on this thing?
But you just asked me what my problem was, so let me just finish my comment. So, so if it's going to be three and a half years before another hotel, I don't care if it's Amberly Woods, you know, I don't know where else it would be. Don't focus on that specifically. But if it's going to be three and a half years anyway before another hotel would be up and operational, then why are we entering into setting this precedent if we don't need to? I guess that's.
Okay. I, I could respond to that, but I think we just ought to go to, because then I'd be giving my commentary.
I, I would just reiterate for some people who weren't here last week. This is incentive, economic incentive. It's the first time the city has ever taken this step. We've tried to do it very carefully, so thank you for your comment there on that. But I also said last week that, given that we're Lake Forest, and we're very analytical, and we look at all facts and circumstances at all times, is that this is, in fact, would be, if we passed all this, a precedent of one. And anybody who converts that, Melanie, into any expectation whatsoever, that it's some kind of God-given right, that you're gonna get exactly the same or better, does so at their own peril. Why? Because the facts and circumstances, by definition, will be different. And we'll decide then, as a group, with our advisors, with our staff, to decide what to do. But this is, this is the package we, we have in front of us today. So, shall we? Alderman Morris, please.
I'm in favor of it. I don't think it's setting a precedent. I think each city council will make their own decision at what point they have something to discuss and, and vote on. So I think it's a fair proposal. I've said before, I'd like to have one successful hotel, then two on life support. So I would support it. I'll stop there.
I think this is a terrific project in the right place. I think I am completely on board with the necessity of incentive packages. I don't like this one. And the thing I don't like about this one is the, is the exclusivity. I, I just heard Mr. Tobin say, and I, and I, and I thought this was probably true, that the Janko group had asked for a higher number on their incentive package. I'm not even sure that the exclusivity was their idea. I think it was probably a bargaining chip. And I'm gonna tell you why I don't like that, as a, as, as something, however it came, I don't like it. I would be completely comfortable with more money in the incentive package. And apparently, both of the hotels, which I think are probably not as, as high-end hotels that are across the way and doing pretty well, have considerably higher incentive packages than we're, than we're giving. At least, that's my understanding. I do not believe that creating this, and it is a precedent. Precedents always start with one. That's how a precedent works. And I've now, in my fifth year as an alderman, I think all the time, and I ask all the time, and there's not anybody who sits here who knows me or on city staff who doesn't know, I ask all the time, have we done this before? When did we do this before? Why did we do this before? To me, this is a really thick red line to be very, very conscious of, if you have never done it before. And I don't mind you, I'm very clear on this. I don't have a problem with the incentive. We get into supporting a hotel, that's clearly something we have to do. It's this exclusivity thing that I don't believe is necessary, and it's not desirable. I think that we are, we are doing a dramatic change, and I know we like to hear that one council doesn't obligate another. If a precedent has been set, there is an obligation assumed. Why would a council, we're all duly elected, we're all taking our jobs seriously. So it comes, it will be a precedent. So I think to say a precedent of one, to me, that is actually, that's illogical. But here's what else I think. I think symbolically, we are appearing to be partial. We are appearing, we had two, in, when this, when we hired Michael Tobin, there were two, two hotels being considered. Now, look, right now, of course, this is a better project. It's the project that, it's gonna be a terrific project. But I don't see why we have to do this exclusivity thing. The market will handle this. We need Amberly to be developed. It, it, I think the odds of it being a hotel may be slim, but we certainly don't want to discourage developers in town. And I have to say, the whole time I've been wearing this welcome-home chairman hat, it's not just welcome, I'm not, I don't, I don't want to just say, we hope you'll consider living in Lake Forest. I want to say to developers, we'd like you to come and do business here. And I think this is, and this is not that message. So, I mean, I'm hearing things like, usually we're cautious. To me, cautious is you don't take a whole new step that you've never taken before, that, that is in fact a precedent. I don't think it's in our self-interest to do this. I don't think it's the messaging that we want to give as a city. And I hear the thing about, it's probably not a timeframe that would really matter to the developer at Amberly, then why do it? Why not, why not just figure out a financial package that works for the Janko group? I want to do everything I can to endorse this, but I think to take a risk on this exclusivity is a risk with my city's future, which I am simply not ready to take.
You've heard what my opinion is, basically. I, and you heard Mr. Tobin say it, that the market will take care of this, whether another hotel comes in. I don't think that government is in the business of, of putting these types of, of restrictions on the free market. And, and if someone wants to come in there, in the first place, any new development would come to us. It would go through zoning. It would require a change in the zoning on this. So, so whether a hotel comes in or not is still totally in our hands. We're not giving away anything with this. We would still be the final determinant of whether another hotel comes in there for all sorts of reasons. It could be that we don't want it for zoning reasons, that we want this to be more of a residential area. There are a thousand reasons that we could prevent a hotel from coming in here. Again, if, it's gonna take about three and a half years to come in, and we're talking about four, what are we gaining by six months? And we're setting a precedent here. Now, I want to go back and just say to Mr. Janko that I think you are the right developer for this project. I would like to see this hotel in this community with you. I think the, the fact that you're a resident here and a long-term resident is extremely comforting to me. I think you will be a very responsible management group for this hotel. This is just a clause that I am not comfortable with. And when Mr. Tobin can't tell me that there are a lot of other hotel developments that have similar clauses, but usually municipalities just sort of let the market dictate what will happen, and they take it on a one-off basis, then I'm just not, like Alderman Beidler, I'm just not happy with that one clause. I would certainly give incentives, but I wouldn't do the moratorium on incentives. Thank you.
Given that a hotel has been envisioned in this, on this site for 20 years, I don't see another hotel coming for at least 10. So I think this exclusivity arrangement maybe is not the best thing, but I'm comfortable with it because of how long it takes projects of this size to get through our process. So I think if it helps the developer secure financing because it locks up a site, I think that's a quid pro quo that we can live with, or I can live with. Because four years in terms of how these projects work is almost the blink of an eye. So I look forward to the project. I think a successful development with the way Hyatt has done this with limited food offerings, I think enhances the attractiveness of the Amberly property for future other developments that dovetail into this hotel. So this is, to me, a continuation of the infill of this whole Conway Park project. And this is another step in that, that process. So I, I will support the project.
Me? Um, this is a good deal. This is a great deal. It provides significant tax revenue to us, gives Conway Park exactly what they need, and quite frankly, boosts the value of the Amberly Woods property. You know, it seems to me that we've lost track of that, and we're into the weeds, and we're not looking at, at what I believe is kind of the big picture, but looking at some of the weeds thing, you know, the, the Jason Smith Amberly thing. He's been here for, I've been, this is my ward. I've been talking with Kathy about this for, for two years. Where is he? Where is he? Where is he? Well, he does, you know, he's looking at this, and he's looking at that, he's looking at this, but he never came back with anything. Okay? The Janko group comes back with exactly what we need in, quite frankly, in, in Conway Park. Look to, and you look at, back at Amberly, the mayor said the, the supplemental use permit that would needed, that would be needed, and there's also the annexation agreement would have to be amended. It would have to go in front of the building, the, the plan commission, the building review board after that happens, and then come back, and then come back to us. Quite frankly, the hotel for Amberly is totally inappropriate. We have 150-foot setbacks, and the hotel is not gonna agree to that. It's a six-story building, really, in that property, where it's gonna clear every tree out of every there. They're gonna have to take down the berm. It is just, we, you know, this is all the stuff that we looked at with Whole Foods, which was totally, it, it didn't work. It, it, it didn't work. And it would not work, it would not work for here. Yeah, a bed and breakfast, fine. What probably is, is, is appropriate here, based on the fact that they're not gonna have a full-service restaurant, is a very nice boutique eat-kind restaurant there. That's, and, and, and this whole prop, this whole project enhances the value of the Amberly Woods property for, for that. And that's probably where the, where the thing is gonna end up. So, then, and then we, so then we get to what, back into the weeds, you know, like, this, the incentives, the moratorium, okay? The incentives are entirely appropriate for what we're doing. We're, we're giving them money that we would never have before anyhow, because it's, 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 it's money that is gonna be derived from a hotel tax, which we get no place else, and we're only gonna give them a portion of that back. So it's, it's, it's clearly appropriate, and it's appropriate for, for a reason none other than, this is a hotel tax. We're giving them, we're giving them back the, the money that we would never get anywhere from, from, from any, from any other case, and the exclusivity. Quite frankly, I want to give this to them so that they can go to the bank and get the deal, and get the deal that they, they want. They need this. This is, this is for them. Quite frankly, this means nothing, this means nothing to us, this three, three and a half years. Because it's, and when you, when you look at this, nothing's gonna be, there's gonna be nothing significant going on in Amberly for three, the three and a half years. Certainly not a hotel. And there's no place other, that a hotel is gonna be west of Waukegan Road. I just think we need to climb out of the weeds and say to ourselves, look, this is a good deal. It's gonna provide us with significant tax revenue. For goodness sakes, let's not let the other stuff get in our way. Let's move forward. Thank you.
So I agree with Alderman Morris, and Newman, and Alderman Reisenberg. And I'm sensitive to what Alderman Beidler and Romo are saying about precedent and the risk of it. I think, for me personally, the risk of precedent, I think, is informed by your experience in the community and the development that's happened in the community. And, you know, I was on the HPC for six years, and Jack was on the plan commission, and others on the BRB, Ray. And, you know, I think when you see lots of different projects and properties zoned for different uses, and you have a consistent process, and the city's just such a good job, that's led by Kathy, you can get led to different outcomes, and that's okay. And you really do end up, through a consistent process, looking at parcels and land uses that were set up for different things and are at different stages of their development, to the mayor's point. And you apply your judgment and the facts of the case, and you try to call it as you see it, and you apply a little pragmatism and common sense. And you can't be totally wedded to one thing and be an absolutist. You have to look at the whole coquafany of the project and weigh it, and say that this is what's best used for the, our city in the long term. And I really feel that here, and I am sympathetic to some of the issues that you raised. But I think that's the big picture, and I think that's really our role. So I'm in support of the vision.
I'll start with my conclusion to avoid suspending you any further. I favor this. I, I, there are aspects of it I don't like. I, I believe that the scarcity value of Conway, Conway Park is significant. And therefore, I, I would have hoped that we didn't have to give anything, frankly. But I recognize that real estate development is risky, and, and I rely on Mr. Tobin's analysis, and certainly on, on, on the mayor's analysis as well, and, and Jack as well, who I, I believe all of you have more significant real estate exposure than, certainly than I do. But I, I don't like giving more than we would give anyone, frankly. Because I, I, it makes me uncomfortable that we're giving up something of, of the city, and, and that has a value to me, even if we would consider it a value that is irrelevant because it doesn't, it's unlikely to meet a tenor or a geography. So because I do believe that the tenor and the geography limits are not real gives, because they're unlikely to come before us, I don't like precedents. I, I do believe this is a precedent, and it, it does start with one. So I absolutely agree on that point. I don't like giving exclusivity to anybody. I absolutely agree on that point, too. But I, I do think we have to do this. I do think the Janko group is the right group to do it. I don't know a lot about them, but I, what little I know, I take great comfort in, and, and I, I think staff's done a phenomenal job negotiating this. So I'm, I'm very happy with it. But if I had the best of all possible worlds, I would not give exclusivity, and I would not create a precedence. So I do support it.
Thank you. I guess I'm the cleanup hitter. But it does allow me to say that I think the comments we've heard, interactions we've had, have been very fruitful. It's very productive to have this sort of discussion, to review in detail the sort of things that we're looking at here. Bottom line, I think we're all in agreement, that this is a, a very good project, very good for the community, something that we should support, in terms of what the developer offers. We do get a little bit of conflict in terms of a detail or two. But the fact that, you know, bottom line, you want to look at, you know, what is in the best interest of the city. And I know I look at that when we have projects that we feel negatively impact the city, that you ask, what can we do to prevent those from negatively impacting the city? And here we have the converse of that. We have a, a development that I think we all agree will help the city, is proper for the city, is productive. What can we do to see that it does happen? And, you know, there are the arguments about precedent. I don't place a lot of weight on that. I know precedent is important, particularly in the legal area. But as we all know, courts do look at issues and do change their mind as they go along. And even though this may be a precedent of one, I honestly don't know whether in the future it makes sense for us to do it a second time or a third time, and I would not preclude that. But certainly, we should continue to look at, you know, different avenues that help our city, improve our city. And in terms of the, the negative And in terms of the, the negative impact of the exclusivity, I take a great, great deal of comfort with the slide that showed Section 7 and the fact, it really does not preclude another person from coming forward, from trying to have a development, particularly since we've had such a passage of time. We've had this on our agenda. We have not had any specific, you know, proposal objecting that it's going to impact them. I think we should assume that, you know, if the market will warrant a fourth hotel in this region, it will go forward, and it has a timeline that I don't think would really preclude it and create any onerous effect on it. So I do support the petition and the resolution as proposed.
Thank you. With that, is there any op, comment from the public with respect to the, the first, which is the granting the final approval of the, of the ordinance of the building review board? On that subject, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to that issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for.
Rob DeWiss.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you mean also objecting to, or discussing the, is that a piece? Or the first portion?
Um, we're going to vote this separately, so let's, let's do the first piece. Thank you. So, is there a motion to grant final approval of the ordinance in accordance with the building review board's recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Technically, this is a resolution, a motion which, which does not have public comment. But please, since you've patiently waited here this long, please step forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Fisher. I'm a Realtor with Canuck Grubloff in Lake Forest. I'm also on the Welcome Home Campaign Committee. I totally support the development of the hotel. I think it'll be a wonderful project for the city. I do really wish that there was not, that there would not be a moratorium put on the second portion of it. I think you've already outlined, as you said, the additional timeline that it will take to develop a second project. This one already has a head start, admittedly. But I am aware that hotel firms are currently looking at the Amberly site, including developers for both Embassy Suites and Hampton Inn, at least one of whom has met with the city within the past two weeks about Amberly. So it's not purely speculation. I believe that it's a much more finite thing than that. I just don't understand the, the need, I guess, to put a non-compet, a somewhat less-than-competitive piece on this portion of it. Hotels don't only look to one community. They look at the surrounding communities. If Lake Forest isn't available, or isn't willing to incentivize another hotel, the hotel will simply go across the tollway to Metawa, to Vernon Hills, to Libertyville, or south to Lincolnshire, all places that, where they will certainly be welcomed with their future revenues. I do think that a second hotel project benefits the community. I think that it can be developed sooner than the four-year piece that makes it seem like, it's sounding like you think that's not a terribly competitive, non-competitive piece. I do think that it can be a decision factor that will push someone to another community. So I just really encourage you, I'd rather see a higher level of support. I want to see them succeed. Absolutely. No two ways about it. The community deserves it. The spot is the right spot for it. It's the right developer for it. I just don't think that we need to be putting roadblocks, in a sense, or sounding like we're even looking to diminish another kind of free enterprise that comes along and wants to be here. We have the processes. Those will be what they are. They will unfold at the timeframe that they do, and I just don't see putting another push down, so to say, on this. And I don't think it's to the advantage of the city of Lake Forest. That's my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Certainly are a complex set of variables and a lot of judgment involved. With that, is there a motion to approve a resolution directing the city manager and attorney Victor Philippini to finalize an agreement with Janko LLC, substantially in a conformance with the term sheet presented to the council, and authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement on behalf of the city?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Beidler?
Nay.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Nay.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Six yea, two nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item of business is for the council to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Fifth ILCS 120/2C1. The council will be discussing personnel matter. There will be no further regular business of the council after the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
So roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. We are adjourned.[1752.58]